What that is, where it is to. Only thing I think of is the data migration, or not the migration. But it's several sources.
That was.
I don't understand them. I don't know where it actually did not get to call TPX today to find out where that mailbox is going, but I at least took it off. I misunderstood you first. Sorry about that.
You were sorry because it was someone called me about X issue, but why is more concerning to me because.
When you said that, I went, oh, I totally missed that.
Right, right, right.
I was more concerned when they said on, on that she started by saying she left it on my uh voicemail box at town office. Like I don't have a voicemail box at town office. What phone number are you talking about? Yeah.
So I was like. My husband. Saying I didn't get that message. He didn't tell me that she left messages. It was only when I ran into Eric. That he had said, she's believing messages.
Yeah, so, so in a non-existent voice. The website had this, had a select board phone number that didn't go anywhere.
Thanks.
Right, isn't that nice? And so we don't know how long it's been there, but she's, she said fix that. No, no, yeah, it was like two, four, four, two. So it was nine, seven, eight, eight, four, eight, two, four, four, two. Um, and I Googled that, like, where is that? Like, it comes up with like.
That's your phone?
That's my phone.
Well, it comes up with you.
Three, eight, two, four, four, two.
Yeah.
That's the phone number in my office.
Well, if you dial it, you'll get a, there, there is no room in the voicemail box that hangs up.
So I'm not surprised, but I did ask for password reset today. They just sent that down to me. So I'll, I'll let me that out.
But it's also weird thing with TPX because even on our voicemail system, at least you get, you've reached the mailbox of so-and-so. And then it tells you the voicemail box is full. And so it doesn't just say voicemail box is full and it doesn't even tell you reach the town of Berlin or anything like that. Just, it just.
I guess I know that a new number that we have is available because I'm used to that one.
Well, Mary's got taped on the phone, that phone number. So I've always used that phone number.
And I always, and that was. Margaret left me, which was three, one, oh, five, nine, one, nine, which went to you because I.
We forwarded.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we're on all sets.
Oh, day thirty-five. We've been chatting. I should probably have pulled up. See, I'd, I'd been working on something. I've not even pulled up the agenda yet. Okay. It's away. Jay, we ready? Uh, thank you everyone for coming. Tonight is what, Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five. It is six thirty P M. This is the meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Berlin. Um, as a reminder, uh, that, uh, please be advised that the open session public meeting is being recorded. And as such, your voice and your image may be captured during the proceedings. Uh, the agendas are available online at my town government. And, uh, uh, we're going to start tonight with, uh, presentations. Uh, we're going to talk about, uh, it sort of accommodates their, their interplay between these, but the Bullard House, eighteen seventy Town Hall, uh, and the highway, uh, the old highway garage building. Um, the order of what I was planning on doing things for tonight is, is, uh, we'll start with any sort of commentary that the three of us have. Um, and then, uh, anyone who is sort of with, uh, boards and commissions, uh, that ha- uh, here that have some stuff and we have the things that you've sent us, but, uh, would like to say things. Uh, then we'll open up to anyone from the public who wants to add some more commentary. Um, I think the goal for tonight is not necessary to come to a final plan and, and vote. My hope is that we uh, have the various ideas that have been floating around about the best uses and plans for these buildings. Um, uh, poke at some of them to see which ones, uh, have, uh, some more realness and which ones really might have fatal flaws that, that, uh, uh, to them and try to sort of narrow it down a little bit. Um, potentially the, us going back and then some of those doing a little bit more research on, uh, and probably coming back in January, February, maybe for more final votes to, to push things forward. Um, uh, and so if we get to that point, I'd feel this was very successful. Now, re-rilling conversations, we never know where we'll go. And there's a, maybe there's an idea out there that is just really great that all of us suddenly like and can't find any fatal flaws on. Uh, that would be good too. Um, and so I, I, I think, uh, just, I was gonna have you just start with just some of the stuff that came out of the facility study. Um, uh, and then I was gonna go and then I'll, you know, rock, paper, scissors, one of the two of you and then the other.
Yes, so Peg actually had put together a spreadsheet with the cost of repairs per building. It might have, oh, it was last summer, the twenty-fourth. I was like, is that the twenty twenty-fourth? I want to make sure that was the right year. Um, so we were looking at, um, the old highway barn. And this was done as an immediate need, like a zero to three, three to five, five to ten. So the total for the old highway gar- barn was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. The immediate need was fifteen thousand, five hundred. And I believe that was relative to the bathroom. So, and I can pull up some more information on that if needed. The, um, just go by. The Bullard House. The total current immediate need was identified as zero at that time. Um, but the total cost was up to four hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred when you go out the ten years. Um, according to the study. And let me just see where we were at with eighteen seventy.
That was big. It was like, uh, one point eight million, ten years.
Going in here. Um, and there's, let's see. So really, one of the things that we've discussed here a few times is what is the best way to move forward with each of those buildings? And the Select Board has had a number of discussions about this. Lisa unfortunately hasn't had the opportunity to weigh in, but I did put in the file kind of a summary of, um, what previous and current board members had recommended for each, um, building. And Bullard House, as I mentioned, cost of immediate needs was zero. We had that four hundred thousand dollar long-term repair cost. And some of the recommendations that were made by the board when this was discussed previously were complete repairs that can be made with existing funds. Um, sell it back to the historical society, um, with no additional funding or keep no action. Um, eighteen seventy was a total long-term repair cost of one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Immediate needs were the front stairs. And discussions around use or future use of that building involved funding prevent, preventative maintenance and required upgrades. Renting and selling as a venue slash artist space or keeping and using ARPA for immediate needs, which we know we put some money toward that, um, as well to look at the drainage. And then the old highway barn, um, it will have reached its end of useful or serviceable life within the next ten years. So discussions included auctioning, making some updates, using it for storage. And, um, the new potential option of repurposing the barn, um, that is under the building. So that is just a brief overview of where we're at with each of the buildings and some of the options that have been discussed to date.
Thanks. Um, uh, the, the Bullard House, of course, I have a, a family connection to it that my grandparents raised my father for a few years in that building. And, and I think both some of the neat preservation of the building and some of the problems of it today are probably thanks to Florence and Russell's work in the place. Uh, I think they've heard some things for the long term, and I think they accidentally preserved some things at the time as they, uh, uh, did the sort of, uh, New England cheap way of getting something fixed and done. So it was a livable space. Um, I think both the, the billion, why I think we couldn't necessarily have a conversation at the Bullard House without eighteen seventy Town Hall is just that their, their interplay is, is, is interact, is, is just, it's, it's too close. They're next to each other physically. They, they share some things. They could continue to share things, uh, as the, the mission and vision for Bullard House, uh, that historical has worked on. Uh, talk about that. There's this nice center of town where you have the old burial ground. You now have the Hearst House. You have, uh, uh, you have eighteen seventy Town Hall and, uh, the Bullard House, uh, along with, uh, First Parish Church and Nineteen Carter that have some, just some nice historic architecture. All, all in the center of town. Um, I, I, I got, I ha- I want to find a way that allows us to continue to move, move forward on these sort of things. I, I worry that, uh, I, I joked and I've said this publicly several times, so I shouldn't be surprised that, uh, I don't think anyone on the Historic Commission, uh, ever got involved in the Historic Commission so they could learn about wa- water runoff, uh, and septic systems, uh, and fixing, uh, fieldstone, uh, uh, foundations and how to lift, uh, historic buildings up. I, I'd love to figure out a way that we don't let the uh, uh, perfection of getting something perfect there in charge, get away of the good, which is renovating the inside of the building, allow it to being used for events and meetings and uh, historical displays for the town. Um, uh, we have, uh, I, I think sadly have shown in the last several years that pure dollars is not the barrier to getting things done. The town has supported it with a couple of nice warrant articles. I just think that it seems like every time you try to do a project, there's, well, we can't do that until this happens first. Uh, and that, that worries me is how do we stop that sort of chaining to go on so we can actually get to, you know, painting the exterior and, and getting some nice displays in there, uh, which the volunteers and, and I think as a town we'd like to see done. And then in, in eighteen seventy Town Hall, um, uh, it, it definitely is a nice event space, but I don't think event planning, event hosting is just a strength of the town. Um, uh, I, I rented it myself, uh, for an event, uh, a party I had with friends, uh, just a couple of months ago. Um, and, and Sandra was great and got back to me and I think a fairly, or got back to Rosner in a fairly timely manner, uh, knowing the hours that she's putting in. Um, but it's not really a place where you can help someone set up or take down or do other things that I think other event places. And places that people who want to rent, if you're doing a, a wedding, I don't know how much the bride and groom want to get in there. You know, four hours early and have to set up tables or stay after folks to help take things down and, and take out the trash. And how do we find ways to sort of encourage more events there? Uh, uh, or, or encourage more events there without it being on the town. I regularly talk about how I think the town should be doing less, uh, and not more. And I think, uh, in a way, I want to find a way to preserve these buildings, but still as a, as a, as a body that we are sort of less involved in some of those things. And so if we could find a way in my book, you know, save the buildings, be less involved, have some more energy there. Uh, uh, would sort of generally be the things I would be looking to try to do. And I, I definitely, I've talked to most people who are sitting here in the audience. I didn't look behind me to see who was at home, but, uh, uh, there, there's, I think some ideas that might get us that direction. Uh, for the old highway barn, I, I, I get there's an older structure inside and I'd love to find a way to, to redo it. I don't think it can stay there as a function. I, I don't think we try to renovate. There's no water or sewer at the current moment. Renovating it for a bathroom is just not a, a, a direction I think we should go in. Although I'm generally open to be. Mine's changed on some of these. Uh, Lisa, right? Lisa?
Okay, um, I guess a couple of things that I came up with, um, just researching, I think with the Bullard House, I think we've, we've set the Historical Commission up to fail. We've basically asked them to do a capital project and have been repeatedly asking them to do a capital project. It is not fair to ask any commission, especially one who is, is supposed to be just doing, you know, taking care of the historical stuff and doing education and all of those things to do all of this capital stuff. That is really the purview of the Select Board and the T A's op- office. It is, it is not the Historical Commission. So the thing that I came up with as a, a potential to sort of move forward with that would be, um, possibly a capital steering group for the Bullard House if we're going to continue to go forward. Um, where you would have, um, like a, a makeup could be the T A, um, a Select Board liaison, somebody from historical, somebody from energy. Um, somebody with sort of facilities background to sort of push that project forward and deal with the HVAC and deal with all of those things that are driving you crazy. Um, I don't think you can talk, but like you said, you can't talk about eighteen seventy without talking about Bullard House. The first things that have to be done with, no matter what, are the drainage and the septic. Nothing else can go forward before those things are done. So there needs to be a focus on that, and that needs to happen no matter what happens with the buildings. Um, the highway barn, I would, I would like that to, to either be a pavilion for the, um, the rail trail there that's going to go behind there or to be a pavilion over on South Commons. I think that's probably the best usage if we can, if we can keep the horse barn piece of it, if that is structurally sound. I never did hear how that turned out, that visit. Do we know anything about the underlying structure? Is it still solid? I know historical planning, you guys went, right? Do you have any thoughts on?
Yes, we.
Here.
Can't hear anything anybody says.
We felt it was a sound building. And that it could be repurposed. I believe that's the sentiment that. She said.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, the other commission member who visited that day was, is not here.
Okay, but it seemed like that was a sound building that could potentially be repurposed? Okay, thank you.
Um, I unfortunately have a much darker view of all the buildings, uh, and it's solely based on the information that we've received. So in terms of the Bullard House, um, that building was bought for twenty-eight years ago. Um, for seventy-two thousand and change. I tried to go back and find how much money has been given to the Bullard House for various projects since then. But really couldn't find a solid amount. Um, I saw two hundred thousand given by CPA in twenty-two. My concern is that Scott and Lisa share is that there's way too much stuff that needs to be done in that building. June, I saw a memo, I think you had put in there, or somebody from the committee, that you were looking for a project manager for a mere cost of a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And unfortunately, that is money that the town does not have, uh, to do that. And I know that you had also reached out to C M R P C for help, but that kind of fell through and.
Well, I, we're still awaiting their intervention. The person who we first spoke with, um, has turned us over to another person who hasn't reached us yet. That's in your report.
Yes.
And, uh, we didn't, when we got the estimate of a hundred and forty thousand, we didn't have any expectation that the, that anybody would want to spend that. We certainly didn't. And we wouldn't expect the town to, to find that power.
Right.
I'm sorry, June, could you go up to the mic, um, so people can hear you?
So for those who, uh, hadn't heard June before, there's a C M R P C representative that they were working with, but unfortunately were unable to continue with it. And another name was provided. But that person has not gotten in touch with you.
That's right.
Um, and the hundred and forty thousand, we'll call it an estimate. Where's June? Estimate, estimate for a salary. We know that there's, uh, you know, potentially no expectation for the town to come up with that money to do that, but I just have, um, you know, grave concerns that there are multiple things going on, but no one is overseeing it. It seems to be piecemeal together. There just seems to be money provided, but with no real progress on it that you can visibly see. Uh, I looked at your vision statement and you had talked about, um, you know, putting it together for education, uh, on that, but don't really see any movement on that. So I, I think that you all have great vision, but unfortunately there's no real way out of it. Um, it's, it's unfortunate. It is historical in terms of the town, but it's not going anywhere. And I don't mean to be, uh, nasty when I say this, but it take, it took less time to build Mount Rushmore in the Big Dig than it is to, uh, do something with the Bullard House. Uh, so that is my concern about that. Eighteen seventy, um, same thing. That's a boatload of money that I don't know where it's going to come from and what it's going to do. Kristin, you had sent something to us about a Creative Spaces Act update that could maybe potentially do something, but there's no legs on it. So again, it's one of those nice ideas that are floating around out there. Um, and in terms of old highway, REC doesn't want it. They don't want that in terms of, um, replacing their pavilion that the town had voted on. And with any of these projects, whether it's eighteen seventy, whether it's old highway, or whether it's Bullard, everybody has a lot of ideas, but there's no real one person who is resp- or a group of people who are truly responsible for it. And given your workload, given Dee's workload over there, I don't think that that's something that should be put on you to manage, to go out and do the work for. And the volunteers in this town are absolutely phenomenal, but volunteers only get us so far. So we're very much stuck in that rock and hard place of money would help move this forward. We don't have the money to move any of these buildings forward. So for me, my option would be to, um, look similar to, uh, the Veterans House, um, on Lincoln Street, that you look for some organization that could keep the historical worth of those buildings and do something with them that can put the resources, be it time, be it people, in place. But right now, these three buildings just, they're yet another proverbial can that just gets kicked down the road year after year after year. And we sit here and we discuss it. And then six months later, where are we? We're sitting here and we're discussing it. So I, you know, I know not tonight, um, but at some point we need to truly put a stake in the ground and make a decision. It may be unpopular with people in town. But unfortunately, we have to look out for the health, the financial health of the town and continually pouring money into these buildings. For me, is not economically feasible and nor something that I would support.
Good.
I think that you cannot reduce preservation of these buildings to dollars and cents. Um, I realize that has to be a component. But I would argue that uh, they need to be, they need to be our center. They need to be our heritage. And the Historical Commission, as Lisa pointed out, cannot manage it as a project and to a structural, the structural end of it, we can't manage because we don't have those skills.
Nor, nor should you be expected to. That is, capital projects do belong with the Select Board.
So I'm reluctant to, uh, endorse placing the, the Bullard House at least in, into, um, the Historical Society. I think sadly, sat, you know, encumbering the Historical Society, uh, with that project. I think the leadership has to be there and the leadership is us and a few other people, none of whom have, uh, construction supervisory skills. So I think I would endorse, if it were possible, to, um, have these buildings managed by and owned by, uh, uh, a five oh one C three that had the leadership to, to move that forward.
And then to clarify, the, the Bullard House today is, is owned by the town and managed sort of through the Historic Commission.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
Oversight.
Yep.
Yeah, but that oversight, that oversight is not supposed to be what they've been doing.
I agree.
It's not.
Well, again, I, I, I think you and I are pretty much on the same, same page in that I believe that oversight really is again oversight of the uh, uh, displays in it and educational stuff in it and meetings that can happen there and not uh, again, the, the, the structural capital maintenance of it. Then, and I, I mean, I, I have up here tried to sort of in some ways actually do some of the footprint of some of our buildings. So potentially the ongoing maintenance, the ongoing structural stuff of the remaining footprint of the town is doable. It's our regularly spoken to because we turn to each other when we make comments and then the microphones can't pick us up. So people at home and people watching later on can't hear us. So it feels odd to still be talking about Peg and Lisa not be looking at them, but. Um, uh, and so, I mean, I, I think it is trying to find that way where that building and, and I think Peg just, uh, all of our buildings is where it goes is how much into facilities does it, does the sort of macro planning for and maintenance of these buildings go.
And that's just in, I mean, even if you could find money to get them up to where they need to be, where is the additional money that needs to come year after year after year to keep them in the same condition?
I think the town voted on that quite clearly. The CPA funds, where ten percent is required to go to historic buildings and it can go to other stuff, that these buildings are both, uh, uh, historic and preservation, but they also have recreational components for the town as well. And so I think the CPA that the town voted to do, because I think they agreed that these things should stay in this town and be something that we continue to, to proceed and protect. I mean, the two hundred thousand that you talked about did come from CPA, um, and, and I believe, uh, I, if I'm correct, very little of that has been spent at this point.
No, that's right.
Right.
The, um, the article that supports foundation and drainage. There's only been four thousand dollars spent of that. So there's ninety-six thousand dollars remaining. And we were not able to move forward with any foundation plans or drainage because of a comprehensive approach that uh, Kristin wanted to pursue. So we've just been hanging all year practically because of that, on that particular thing. We can't, we, we can't do anything above if our foundation is not secure.
Right. And I think in the first decade plus of owning it, I think the intent, intent was earlier on was try to do as much with volunteers and and little drips and drabs of money here and there, which is why it went slow sort of earlier on. I think we've attempted to change that, again, thinking that dollars was the reason things were moving forward. And we've now discovered that even when you have the dollars sort of passed and supported by the taxpayers at town meetings, that we still don't have the, the expertise and staffing to sort of, uh, pull off, uh, larger capital projects.
And I think to know, a- as you pointed out, there.
You might have to come to the mic, sorry.
There, there's a very close link between what the problems at eighteen seventy and the problems at Bullard are so closely linked that they really have to be addressed together. You can't pull them apart. So even though we want to move forward on the Bullard House, we really have to get a comprehensive plan put together for both buildings. And right now, we don't have anything to do with the eighteen seventy Town Hall per se. We've been focusing on the Bullard House. And, uh, we actually did have someone come to, was supposed to be working on the drainage, but because the, the eighteen seventy had been lent out for the movie, they had to not do that work. So we've been pushed off until next spring. So we had hoped to get, get it done for this winter. But it, it, it couldn't happen because of the, the movie.
Well, that's the first I've heard that the movie pushed it off. I was not aware of that. Um, but there are two issues with the drainage. There's the issue actually structurally in foundation um, on the site of the house. And then there's also runoff and stormwater management on the site as a whole, which is why they are interconnected. So my concern especially was given how tight the site is and the fact that you're talking about maybe doing a ramp and adding other um, impervious surface to it, that would cause a further issue, um, because there is so little, um, I guess pervious surface on the, uh, on the site as it is. So, um, you know, I really didn't want, even though we have the parking lot article, to pave that parking lot and then to eventually perhaps have to tear it up because you're talking about drainage issues. So it just, you know, I think a comprehensive approach, um, makes the most sense. And we did have an engineer that designed, um, some foundation or made some recommendations on foundation improvements. Um, but I know the commission had felt that it was overdesigned and was too much, um, you know, cost and work to do. So there's been a lot of debate back and forth. And I think the struggle is I'm not an engineer. I'm not an O P M. You know, I've recommended the project manager. They've looked into it. It's, it's very costly to do. And so you, you have really a lot of, you know, different cooks in the kitchen advising different things. And it makes it really difficult to move the project forward because you don't have someone with full oversight or ownership from an engineering perspective.
And that's the hard part. I mean, even if you had a project plan, a very simple Excel project plan that listed everything that needed to be done, then you might be able to have efficiencies with the other items, but it's, oh, we're started the, oh, no, we gotta wait. No, no, wait, wait, we're gonna start at this. So it's a lot of ping pong and we'll be here twenty-eight years from now debating this same issue that nothing is really moving forward because it can't.
Right. And I, I think that the cost prohibitiveness of looking at the site as a whole is, is you've discovered from not only just a project manager perspective, but then to put the whole thing out to bid has resulted in the need to do it piecemeal because it's too costly to do it any other way.
Right. So how do we break the catch? So how do we break the catch 22 that we can't get a comprehensive plan until we have the pieces put together? We can't do the pieces until we have a comprehensive plan? I mean, for, for my standpoint, I mean, there's been water in that basement for 200 years, water in the basement for another 50. We're not, we don't use it for, we don't use it for storage. We don't use the basement for educational stuff and, you know, do the cleaning up of the inside, paint the building, replace some of the windows for some more energy efficient stuff and get it so we can use the building for events and displays.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, with the basement, I don't see the other progress on the house necessarily as being delayed by the basement and the drainage concerns. It does obviously need to be addressed. But I, I've always thought that the commission should be doing the museum part and, and the design and, you know, those aspects of it that, you know, really should have that historical value and component brought to it. It's really hard to do when everything's capital, as you've mentioned.
Tim, can you talk about the, the potential for CPA money for a project manager?
I can't hear the question.
So the, for those who didn't hear, Lisa posed the question to Tim Wheeler on CPA about the use of potential CPA money to provide funding for an overall project manager.
One of the articles.
Yeah, I think we felt comfortable that a percentage of the money that had been voted by the townspeople, somewhere around 30,000 might be pulled for project management. You know, as Kristen discovered with the Town Hall steps issue, the, the proposal to do Town Hall steps was $575,000 and over 100,000 was for management. I mean, you think to yourself, these are preposterous figures. They don't make any sense in the real world that we live in. I totally disagree with Peg because I think she's, she's not looking at the opportunities that are there with CPA money, matching money that we can pull in from other types of grants, and the long-term process that we should be looking at this. We, we don't need to accomplish these things in the next year. And I, and I don't think progress has been made because of obstacles that are there that, you know, none of us can fully control. But I think we, we need to use CPA money in a, in a realistic way. And I think if we, if we break some of these projects down into pieces, you know, we can move forward and accomplish them. Probably about $50,000 a year gets put into the historic bucket out of CPA on an annual basis. And, you know, I think if you look at that over a multi-year process, that you can accomplish quite a bit.
My, my research came up with the best case scenario for Bullard House would be four years, the best case scenario to get it where it needs to be.
And I guess my question goes back to who is the proverbial we that are breaking down all these projects into manageable bites? Well, you know, I mean, but, but that's, but that's just my point is that we all have great ideas, but no one or no ones step forward to say, give it to me. So we end up doing this year after year.
Well, it, I think has been explained. Because of the intricacies of this drainage issue, you know, pieces of the Bullard House project has, have been sort of postponed for the time being. I think 1870, dealing with that, turning it over to a 501(c)(3) with some sort of contract with the town, you can begin to generate some funds out of that process. If you look at what was being accomplished prior to COVID with 1870, you had theater groups, you had contradances, you had a tremendous amount of activity going on. And I think the other part of the equation has to do with, you know, what happens with the meeting house in 20 years? And, you know, they've created a 501(c)(3). You begin to look at venues in the center of town with the meeting house and the, and the Bullard House and 19 Carter and 1870 all working collaboratively together, managed, and I agree, that the town really isn't in a position to manage the, the 1870 in a proper fashion. That's not our skill set. But that's where I think, you know, June's thought about a 501(c)(3) or some sort of comparable type of entity. Abby's been out looking at other places around the Commonwealth where buildings like 1870 have been turned over to, you know, nonprofit organizations and they run them quite efficiently and utilize volunteers in the way they can and generate some income that helps support the structure. And it becomes a venue that not only people from outside of town, but, you know, a great many people from in-town can continue to use. So I, I just think we have to be a little more visionary about this. And I think Scott and Lisa, you know, you've, you've looked at this with the long-term view and, and I think appropriately. So I'm, I'm excited about what you guys have said.
I, the, the town will, I, I think on an ongoing, on an ongoing basis, need some sort of facilities project maintenance, what management, whether or not that rests on the Highway Department, whether it rests directly to the Select Board, whether it rests, you know, in, in your office. That this, this build, I mean, the, the Bullard House and 1870 are not the only buildings we own in town that will need ongoing sort of stuff. We, we have, in theory, gotten rid of a couple of smaller buildings that didn't require, well, weren't heavily used anyway. The, the Brown Barn is gone, but the likely, the old highway and ambulance barns are, are in the process, have, have at least a process to, to not need as much attention. But there are, this, this building will need ongoing stuff. And, and I believe it has been a, a drain on some of your time, Kristen, just the project for this building that go on too, between the, you and Fred, actually, between the AC and the heat and, and the wonderful stuff that Asabet is doing in this building. I think maybe it really needs is the town needs to, we need some assistance in that particular area. If we're going to continue to have millions of dollars with the buildings in this town that we're going to want to hold on to and have that longer term vision, Peg. So some of these things get fixed when they're $50,000 projects and not $200,000 projects.
And I would say too, if you're going to, I know Highway right now is Highway slash facilities, sort of. But if you're going to bring on more, you would need to bring on somebody else to help manage the building. So you'd need another position. I wouldn't feel right pulling someone away from Highway because Fred just doesn't have the capacity with his current staffing levels.
And that potentially some ARPA funds on some projects that might not be going forward in time could get us potentially started on it to giving us time to put it into a budget for more ongoing.
It, it's a possibility. I mean, there are funds that aren't moving as quickly as we know. So we do have some decisions to make.
And I, I think I was one of the people who railed against the schools when they used ARPA funding for staffing. And so I, I, I say that knowing that it is a traffic you can get yourself into is that you use one-time funds for something ongoing. You have to make sure you have the ongoing ability to, to support it.
You'd have to work it into the operating budget so that way you're not just a time limited position.
But there, there is an element of, you know, the way that, that you talk about these positions is in the long run, it costs you less to take care of things than it does to hire some, than it does to be putting out emergency fires all over the place or catastrophic failures. Hiring somebody to take care of things, to maintain things saves you money.
Right. And to have someone who, when we hire someone to come up with a plan, doesn't over-engineer it. That, that like, that I don't think $500,000 for those steps. I don't think anyone in town would advocate that that is the direction to go for those stairs.
That wasn't, that, that scope was, was not, I don't think the intent was what that scope came back as.
No, right.
Yeah. That was a whole rebuild of the whole front of the building. That wasn't,
Yeah.
that wasn't just the steps. That was a lot of things.
But again, if we had potentially someone whose job is to watch some of these and be on them, I think someone would have caught that earlier because I, I think, right, we are stretched thin in a lot of places. And so sometimes those things get by us with good intent, with everyone involved all the way through it. And luckily, again, reasonable people all the way across, we looked at that and didn't go, oh, let's have a check for it. You know, let's go, you know, we, we figure out a better way of doing it.
Well, one thing with the stairs that we did talk about was they were recommending that the side commercial, you know, the, the side stair that's on the neighbor's property be removed and there be a side commercial stair with a sidewalk coming off the driveway. So I, I didn't see it as much past the original scope because they were talking about handrails. I, I was just absolutely shocked that, that it came through at that price, as was Austin Designs, who did the bid. He was thinking we were more in the like $50,000, $30,000 to $50,000 range. And, you know, even if you were to find someone, say this, you know, company overvalued, if you will, say by 50%, you're still now at a quarter of a million dollars to do the project, which I don't think is palatable to anybody. So one of the things I've done is gone back to the architect with a couple of different proposals and asked if he could do a scaled back on some of those costs. And if we looked at just, you know, the handrails, the commercial stair and the little sidewalk off the driveway. So at least if people are parking on Woodward, they have a way, you know, if they can't walk up the hill, but they can get, you know, up a commercial stair, they would have a way to do it. So I'm in the process of working with the architect on that and we're going to be talking to CPA about it in a couple of weeks.
You know, in other parts of the state, you begin to see these cultural corridors. And I think Hudson, Berlin, Clinton, with particularly what's going on in Hudson and Clinton, Berlin becomes a likely link in that chain. And, and I think we have a moral obligation to think about the way in which, you know, the, those entities, 19 Carter, the Bullard House, 1870 and the Congregational Meeting House might very well, in time, become a destination that, you know, people link on that cultural corridor. So I, I mean, I, I think it's an exciting opportunity and all of those become a campus that networks pretty effectively if we can have that vision. You know, I, I wonder if we need an article on the warrant that entertains the notion of, to begin with, maybe 1870 being leased out to some 501(c)(3) that would be responsible for the management of activity there. So that, like you said, Scott, someone wouldn't have to say, oh, I, so I have to take out the trash when I'm done. I can't just walk out the door after my wedding. I, you know, I think we can come up with creative ways in which to put it back into the manner in which it was being utilized pre-COVID, where it was, you know, really vibrant, active, lot of activity going on and, and some real good cultural activity for the community and the, the region in general. So thank you.
Are there other people in the audience who want to add to the conversation? I think, okay.
I think that this discussion raises issues that we haven't really discussed in that context before. So I think that's something we need to, the Historical Commission and others in the community need to have a chance to think about and talk about and see what could come up toward some kind of solution for.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this did raise a few things. Again, I didn't think we were going to come to a full agreement. I have a few more things I want to go back and look at. I think it will, hopefully, both people watching tonight and even those of us in the room will have some side conversations and things that this might have stimulated to, to get us to, to move forward. I think we, I mean, budget season is about to start. And so if there was ever a time here to start thinking about, you know, where staffing could change in town, there's a lot of areas in town where, where, where people feel that we might be lightly staffed. And so, you know, we probably can't get all of it through, but, but where those things balance out. I think we're about to talk again about ARPA funds because some of the projects might not be moving. And so it could be a chance to use that, not just for long-term staffing, but it potentially, it wouldn't be long-term, but I mean, potentially something that could kickstart something or kick a can or do a little bit more research that helps move some of these things along. And I will, we will obviously let the, the formal boards know. We'll let as many people as can know when we bring this back to Select Board to potentially have some, some votes on this. And I think that might be where we just leave it for tonight.
Yeah. And I do want to say, Peg, I absolutely understand your frustrations. I understand where you're coming from. I do. I just, I, I know we've gone to town meeting with Bullard stuff over and over and over again and it inevitably passes. We've gone with stuff about 1870, it inevitably passes. And while those projects do not speak to me one little bit, they obviously speak to somebody, somebody when we go to town meeting.
And I agree, you know, and, and I don't mean to be negative Nellie, but I want to look at, at the facts is that we're pouring money into these buildings that truly aren't going anywhere.
Oh, I absolutely think the way that we're doing things has to, has to change.
Right. So, you know, as I said, we may come to a decision that people in town aren't going to like, you know? And, and unfortunately, that's, that's the, the burden that we bear by sitting at the big table on, on Monday nights. But we, we truly, and I'm not going to beat this horse anymore, but if these things need to move forward, then people need to step up and make a commitment to get this done and stop the, let's have a conversation, let's have a conversation, let's have a conversation.
Well, that was part of my intent of putting it on the agenda is to get us to, to get us to that point. We've, I think we've been working it through. I mean, that's Facilities Day sadly was 2024 when we actually got the results. And we've been working our way through some of the buildings. And I think with this, these got pushed to this part because these were messier buildings to, to deal with. There wasn't a, I think, an easy answer to it. So I'm hoping then, go ahead.
So, I mean, I think Peg's concern is, is legitimate. But if, as she said, she can't find a lot of dollar figures that have been spent on Bullard because I don't, I don't recall, other than the 200,000, which as June said, minimal amounts of that have been spent. I don't think we've been dumping tons of money into Bullard. And I don't think we've been dumping other than the elevator, which, you know, was a number of years ago.
That was also partially grant funded.
And that was grant funded to a significant degree. I don't, I, I haven't recalled significant amounts of money being dumped into 1870 either. And I don't want us to dump taxpayers' money unless there's a formula that shows some sort of return. And as June said, some of that is hard to measure, you know? The historic preservation of objects and culture is hard to put a figure on. And, but with the help of CPA, I think we can do a tremendous amount over multiple years. But you have to have a battle plan that allows you to move forward. If some of the ARPA money that's not going to be utilized can push us forward on some of the drainage issues and parking issues up in that upper lot, that would be great because I think that alleviates one of the roadblocks.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, the, the next item is actually our official general public comment period. So if there are people who wanted to talk about other articles or other items, you're more than welcome to. I did not see anyone in the room actually sign in to talk at that point and I don't see any hands online. And so let's go to the Town Administrator Report.
Okay. It is a big report because we have been having meetings more focused on town meeting and sort of one-off meetings in the past couple of months. So I will try to go through it briefly. And if you have questions, I can dive more deeply into the items that you ask about. Much of the past two months has been spent preparing for the Fall Town Meeting and rolling out the FY27 budget. As we know, Fall Town Meeting was held on the 17th of November. All articles passed, some had amendments, and the citizens petition for drive-throughs was passed over after the Planning Board's prior article did pass. What I did as well is I put a blurb in, just like this, almost in the Powderhouse News that talks about it and refers folks to more information about town meeting on the Berlin Cable Access Channel on YouTube at townofberlin MA. So we do still have extra copies of warrants laying around. If anybody wants more information, the best thing might be to watch it on the YouTube channel. FY27 budget, the FinCom met on October 15th to do their FY27 budget kickoff meeting. And we have gotten through the, that's a typo, FY25 performance appraisals, not FY26. This is where we cross three fiscal years, so it gets a little funky. FY27 capital request forms were due and submitted to the Capital Committee on October 31st. And I've included a snapshot of the requests in your, in the Town Administrator- And I've included a snapshot of the requests in your, in the Town Administrator Report. On the town side, the request came from Fire, EMS, Police, and Library at a total cost, if all projects for FY twenty seven were to be funded, of two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, of which all but eleven thousand, five hundred would look to public safety mitigation funds to pay for. So really just the library computer replacement for eleven thousand, five hundred is the only non-public safety item at this time that would have to come out of free cash unless the Capital Committee recommends taking some of the public safety items out of free cash, which typically we don't do as long as we have the funding available in mitigation. The schools also, Berlin Boylston Regional has submitted their budget and, their capital requests, rather. And for FY twenty seven, they totaled four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at Berlin Memorial and one point three six two million at Tohoto, our portion of which would be, I'm sorry, nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars at Toronto, Tohoto, our portion of which would be three hundred and twenty nine thousand, seventy seven. I think, you know, we often ask departments to kind of capture the universe of what's out there. And if possible, spread it over multiple fiscal years. As you can see, this has happened with Police and Fire. I think one of the questions for the Capital Committee, when the school comes before them, is how did, can any of these be spaced out over multiple fiscal years? Because they're all shown in twenty seven. And, well, you know, I recognize all may be immediate needs. Obviously, that's not an amount of funding that we're going to have available in FY twenty seven. It would have to be spaced out over multiple years, as normally happens. So to stay tuned, Capital is meeting on Thursdays at, it's either seven or seven thirty. I think their next meeting is this Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. So we, you know, those are not, unfortunately, hybrid meetings. You're welcome to attend in person. They will also be shown afterwards on the YouTube channel. The other piece of our budget process is looking at the COLAs and step increases. So as you are aware, the Board voted to approve the Town Administrator and Personnel Committee's FY twenty seven recommendation of a three percent COLA and a one-time step increase or equivalent of two percent market adjustment for non-union, non-contractual employees. This, as we discussed, is in anticipation of the significant market adjustments to wages that will likely be required once the class and comp plan update is complete this spring. I did receive the contract today from the Collins Center to do the study for the total of sixteen thousand dollars that we have for the Classification and Compensation Plan. I have not looked at it yet, but we'll certainly be looking at it. As you know, our last plan was FY twenty, and the economy has changed drastically, as everybody's aware. Last week, we held the, I'm sorry, on November eighteenth, we held the Budget Kickoff Meetings for FY twenty seven with department head, boards, and committees. And we just discussed the personnel changes, but departments are asked to submit level expense budget proposals, meaning at FY twenty six amount or less. If there's something you do not need, unfortunately, it tends to be there's a contractual increase or some type of expense that we have a justification for, unfortunately, increasing that budget. So it is level unless there is a non-discretionary increase in a quote, a contract, et cetera, that pushes it over the FY twenty six level. And I put a little bit in here from the budget memo. We are really continuing to see the leveling off of revenues, particularly in regard to new growth. And there are significant residential and commercial valuation adjustments due to the five-year revale process that we just went through. So I know folks are seeing sticker shock on their tax bills because of that. But that's also impacted by the commercial devaluation, particularly for the malls, as we continue to talk about. I, I know that I mentioned at the last meeting that our expense budgets are pretty razor-thin at this point. There's really not anything to cut there on the town side. And I think that we, the class and comp plan will be very enlightening because we have a lean staff here, but we want to maintain the folks we have. They're very talented and dedicated. And I think making sure that we don't lose them to a neighboring community is well worth the effort, especially when we look at positions that are being posted on, like the Mass Municipal Association's website, and you have folks coming in with much less experience, asking for higher pay and getting it because people are desperate and we have a severe shortage of employees in the municipal sector. So to that end, I've also asked department heads to prepare what I'm calling a five-year outlook for non-capital expenses, including personnel. So we can kind of understand the universe of what's out there. And obviously, it won't be able to be funded in one year, two years, three, probably not three years. But I want that to be on the table. And Scott and I actually discussed an approach to the budget briefly for FY twenty seven that I think will make sense. And I don't know if you want me to share it, Scott, or.
You go ahead.
We talked about doing it a little bit differently this year. So the budgets are due December twelfth. I will then take the next two weeks and I will put all of the requests in the spreadsheet. And before I start working on my cuts or revisions or recommendations, bring it to you all at your first meeting in January. So you can kind of take a first look, particularly at the supplemental funding requests and go, let's look more into that one. Nope, don't bother wasting any time on that one. So the only caveat I put out is I will not have met with department heads at that point because that usually happens in January. But as a result, as Scott pointed out, the FinCom then gets the budget before the Select Board does. And we would like to be able to at least get the department request column out to the Board, get some feedback. Then I'll meet with department heads and we will hopefully spend less time reviewing requests that are not policies or decisions that the Select Board would like to pursue. So that was sort of the, the goal. I think it makes a lot of sense. But I won't have the, the details. So it'll be kind of a fifty thousand foot discussion on the fifth of January. And then we'll do more research and I'll meet with the department heads and then we'll come back with more information.
So my, my intent with this, just to be clear, was that I think, one, we see the budgets that we're responsible for after FinCom has approved them in some respects, which felt odd. Two, sometimes we ask for more cuts, not knowing where the number started. And so potentially, you know, Kristin and the department heads and FinCom have already done cuts. And then we try to cut it some more, which is sometimes unfair. And it's also hoping that this is a little bit easier on Kristin's side because as you point out sometimes, Peg, where were the buck stops? And so it is not Kristin has necessarily been the one who has asked for those cuts. It's like, no, we, we think this is not the year for this and that we can take some ownership of it. And so, again, it will be high level. I don't think we're going to be saying, no, this should be forty, five hundred dollars, not five thousand. I think it's more like, here's the supplement request. No, I don't think we're adding this this year. Oh, no, I agree. This is something we really should try to add this year and at least give a little bit of a prioritization on those pieces. And so we'll be doing that at our January fifth meeting.
And I, I think it makes a lot of sense. And I, I mean, obviously, it's at the Directive of the Board. But having to manage it day to day, it has to work as well. So having that iterative kind of process back and forth between us to say, okay, well, if we want to do this, this is what happens and be in understanding the full ramification of the decisions that we're making. Because we are a little bit, you know, as you saw, we had some deficits and for twenty six, yes, for twenty six already that we adjusted town meeting. It was great that we had a Fall Town Meeting to do that. I anticipate we'll probably have one going forward, but there may be a year where there's not a need for a Fall Town Meeting. We're not going to have one just to have one. So we were fortunate to make those adjustments this year. But I like the idea of having a bigger upfront process here with the Select Board.
Do the department heads put their reasoning for the request in writing on the?
The supplemental request? Yep. So there's actually a form and that gets uploaded to the Drive.
You have some information. You just haven't had conversations.
Correct. So I will have a description of the cost, whether it's a one-time or an ongoing expense, a justification for why it's needed now and what will happen if we don't fund it. So there's a series of questions that walks you through. So, yep, those will be uploaded into the Google Drive. And then I will do the summary budget in Excel of just the total of all requests. And I do actually a separate spreadsheet for supplemental funding and I put more description in there. So I will have that for you guys for the fifth as well. All right, that's a lot, but there's more. The Town Center project, which we will discuss tonight, so I'm not going to speak too much on it. But Lisa and I did have the opportunity to meet with First Parish Church Council. They have signed the Septic Access Agreement to allow us to move forward with testing, which is actually scheduled for Wednesday, provided the Select Board signs the, off on the access agreement. And they've indicated they're open to discussions regarding the sidewalk. And we also have some discussions to make about the, to have about the clock and the flagpole, but I will save that for later on in the agenda. I think we already talked about the Town Hall Stair redesign and discussing scaling back that project with the architect. And then I was supposed to go to CPA this week, but I asked them to push me out two weeks so that we can have a better conversation at that time with the architect and present a revised plan for them. One piece of really good news, we finally received all the approvals on the radio project for the four hundred thousand dollars in USDA funding that we received from Congresswoman Scherhand's office. Our luck was we submitted it all for procurement just prior to the government shutdown. So then we were stuck because there was nobody working at USDA. So we are moving forward. And we're also going to be drafting up a license with the hotel so that we can put one of the antennas on Homewood Suites to help with service on the south side of town, in addition to the portable radios and some other improvements to the system. So that will all come out of that four hundred thousand dollars. The Town's new ambulance, which went into service in August, experienced what they're calling a thermal incident. Basically, there was a fire in the electrical wiring in the ambulance. While responding to a call on four ninety-five, it broke out in the center console. The crew used an onboard extinguisher to stop the spread of the fire. It appears to have been the wiring harness for the mobile data terminal of the truck. And of course, we have a little bit of this going on now of who's to blame because there's the manufacturer we bought the truck, the company we bought the truck from, but there's also many other vendors involved in the individual components. So they did actually a full investigation. The folks from Florida flew up here to take a look at it. And we expect to receive a report shortly, which will inform us on how to move forward. Do we repair? Do we replace? There's concern because there is a corrosiveness that comes when you spray that fire extinguisher. And it had to sit without being touched for insurance purposes. So we now have damage to the interior of the ambulance as well. So to help us out in the interim, Boylston was kind enough to loan us an ambulance that they were set to trade in. And we are also getting a loner ambulance likely from Greenwood Auto, so we can return Boylston's back to them. So the problem is, we just don't know if we can move forward with a repair or if a full replacement actually of that body of the ambulance is needed. So this could take anywhere from six months to a year and a half. And I feel terrible because I was joking, I said, oh, tell me it was our, our new people who were right. It, it was our two new full-time firefighters who were on the ambulance. So I certainly did not mean that they caused it, but I just said, what luck. You know, they, they made it, I think, over to Holiday Farms when the vehicle shut down and they had to actually put out the fire. The good news is we were able to get mutual aid to assist with the multi-vehicle crash on four ninety-five that they were attempting to respond to. So we're very thankful for all of our partners, Boylston especially. Opioid funding, we haven't discussed in a while. Chief McQuillan and I met with Rise on October twenty first. They are a nonprofit that is partnering with DPH and the Bureau of Substance Addiction to form what's called the Mosaic Municipal Technical Assistance Program. There's an acronym which is probably easier to say. So their goal is to help us create a comprehensive response to the overdose crisis by using our opioid settlement funds. And to our benefit, actually, the CMRPC has been hired to act as the central and Metro West Regional Coordinator for this. So they're going to help us create a survey that goes out to folks in the community and then design a program that best addresses the needs of our residents. We have been approached by a lot of people basically asking for our money to put into a program that they're doing. None of them are local. One of them was housing, I think, in rehabilitative housing in Plymouth County. And I said, well, I don't understand how that serves the residents of Berlin. So, well, anyone can live there. I said, well, they're not, folks from here are not going down there permanently. We've also been asked by the, we talked in a show, but they really just want funding to continue existing programs. And I think it's really important to take the funds that we have, which are about sixty thousand dollars and will be over a hundred by the time we're done with these settlement agreements that go out fifteen years and do something that really makes an impact on folks here. And Chief Mike has some great ideas from things he's seen out, you know, on the bus. And we'll continue to talk. And once we have a survey developed and some data, we'll bring it back to the Board with a proposed program, and we'll go from there. I also want to give a big thanks to Omid Mandavi, who completed his energy fellowship with the town. He really worked on assisting the Bullard House with an RFP for HVAC upgrades, climate leader, community components. And he also developed a plan for energy efficient upgrades for town buildings, which was, is, is rather in your packet this evening. But they, we, we want to have some further discussions with the buildings we intend to retain as to how we want to move forward with some of these energy-saving measures, which will help be, help off, help be offset by the reduction in electricity and oil. Good news on the public safety project upstairs. The HVAC work has begun. We had all the fabricated duct work that came in, and the students and instructors are installing that right now. And they continue to work on the frame, wire, and piping of the space. So our next step will be putting fire alarms and then sprinkle our system out to bid. That's something that ACBIT cannot do, understandably. And we did receive an FY twenty six earmark from Representative Kill Coin's office. It's fifty thousand dollars towards the purchase and installation of a fire pole to go from the upstairs space down to the fire bays. So very thankful for that and working with the architect right now to come up with a cost to design that. In terms of personnel, the opening round of Highway Union negotiations occurred last Wednesday. And ground rules were set. We're looking at proposals. And we've agreed to meet approximately every two weeks for negotiations until we have an agreement that can come forward to the Select Board for discussions. That will also be an executive session discussion once we have more firm information nailed down as to what they're looking for and what our recommendations are. Also would like to welcome our new full-time firefighter, Patrick Madden, and formerly Call, but now full-time firefighter, Kevin Benoit. This brings the department up to five full-time employees plus the chief, which will help fill those open shifts that go unfilled. And we're basically cost shifting from open, from the Call budget over to the permanent budget. It'll provide a lot more stability. I am really thankful that, you know, Chief and I looked at the numbers and are able to do it within the existing budget. And, you know, those call shifts, even though we upped the, the rates, there is such a shortage of paramedics and EMTs in this country that we are not, we're still having open shifts more than we thought we would at this point. Let's see, Recreation. We, I received draft bid documents for the Pavilion, which are being tweaked a little bit by Bob Holmes. And then I will be able to put the Pavilion out to bid. And I also will then next put the Wells out to bid at South Commons. That's for the irrigation for the Field Renault project. The Rec Committee is still reviewing the draft scope of work for the Playground project. But Peg, Felicia, and I sat down and discussed a plan for all of the projects and talked about timing. The Personnel Committee also met and did ask Recreation to further refine the job coordinator description. They felt that it was too cumbersome, too, too much for a ten-hour-a-week position. So we sat down and scaled it back, and it's on its way back to the Rec Committee for review. And then it will go back to Personnel. We have completed line painting in town. We also had Mass DOT come out. They've made some recommendations for Central and West Streets, which we'll be talking about with the Chief and Fred at the December fifteenth Select Board meeting. And some of it does pertain to speed and signage. There's a possibility we may have to look at where do we fund some of this signage from. But it's looking like it's going to benefit the community in terms of potentially reduced speeds in certain areas in town. So really, really happy about that. And I'll stop. I think that's enough for right now.
That's a lot.
I know it is. Sorry. I was trying to make it as quickly as I could.
No, that was good. And as you point out, there's been a lot since our last meeting and there's a lot going on. Questions for Kristin?
Just the parking lot expansion. If they are still going forward with that, that number, I think, was the complete number. And there is an earmark associated with that. So please do not let them give you that number.
Right. There's an earmark. They'll pay for some of it. And so there's no way.
Oh, if they're coming forward for capital with the full capital number, they, the problem is, my understanding from talking to Al, because I did ask him, do you guys want to reappropriate this funding? Because the whole project is six hundred thousand dollars. They're going to use the $100,000 earmark for design, they said.
I thought it was all. Okay.
I will look into that. Let me report back.
There was a parent who worked for a design company that put forward the design, I thought, when I was at the the meeting that I was at, but by all means.
Nope, let me, let me ask. That was my understanding. I may have gotten it wrong, but. Yeah.
They approved as the design document.
Well, they also have to spend it by June. They have to spend the $100,000 earmark that goes with the $650,000 project by June 30th of next year. So there's, even if they were ready to go tomorrow, you're not going to either have the funding or the time to build that parking lot before the end of June, which is why, you know, I did make mention of that. And Lisa kindly enough, you know, said, here's the process. I connected them with the state reps. And where they have gone from there, I am not sure. I've not heard they have changed plans. So let me get a little more info, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I'm still curious. I know that I had asked for numbers of graduating classes going back even beyond seventh grade, you know, to look at it and try to come up with, and never could get them. You know, to say, class of next year, 100 people, class of next year, 20 people, class of next year, so that you could even it out. Never saw those numbers. It was just a request that there's more parking there.
And well, they're already, I can tell you, they are already out of parking, but the problem is that the place where they need to put parking has to have special, because it infringes on conservation land.
Correct.
So it's wildly expensive to put in these parking spots.
And that was the problem. When I was there, it was the slope going down onto 70. So that's all grass. So it was, it was the discussion of what do you put there? Do you put, you know, like the gravel there, but then what happens to it when it plows? And then there's trees, and then there's, I think, a memorial for, I think, a few of the students who have passed who are in 9/11. So, yeah, it was just fraught with, well, where are you gonna put it? But typically, isn't it year over year, it's like 300,000 that the school gets for capital?
It really varies. It's been more than that in recent years between the two schools.
Right. But I'm wondering too, my favorite middle school furniture. You know, again, do you go back to them and say, you know, ish estimate, we've given you $10, you know, every year for your, and obviously $10 is a, is a non-number because I don't want someone coming back yelling at me of, no, we give them this. But, you know, typically, we give you $10 a year for your capital requests. Your requests are a lot more than $10,00, or $10. So could you, and I know that we can't ask for justification, that it's just a final number. But can they prioritize them like they did last year?
Yep. And capital will ask them to do that, for sure, because they did last year as well. And usually they do that. Ranking specifically. And yes, I have to say that capital does put folks through the wringer, as they should, and see where they're at. So I imagine they will also ask Fire, EMS, and Police to rank their projects in order of priority as well. They typically have done that during the discussion with those department heads slash schools. So they can ask questions and help offer suggestions on prioritization.
And to be fair, we've already paid for half of what the school is asking for.
Great.
Because the 350 for roof replacement was a fall time meeting has already passed. And so they're only asking for another, what's it, my math's not fast enough, 429,000 for everything else, even if we give them everything else they're asking for.
Well, the thing is too, you would think that you would get economies of scale when you have BMS asking for staff and student devices. And at Tohanta, they're also asking for staff and student devices, so.
Last year, they said that was already an efficiency number.
Okay.
And it's likely an every-year number, by the way. Just because your technology, the technology stuff for students is not $50,000. And so that's probably, and they only have a three-to-five-year life. And so that's probably something they need almost every year.
So no, just a little bit more information from, from them. I understand that this is a wish list, and that's what everyone's going to do. And, you know, Scott, that was a great suggestion to dump all the numbers into the budget and to let the town see this is what has been asked for. Sure, you want to pass it? All right. Well, this is what it means to you. But unfortunately, these are some of the cuts that need to be made, hopefully not as draconian as last year. But you won't know until they're up there. And I don't know if it's a TA report question, or if it's an end of the, end of the questions, question about your list of projects. So you tell me, do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to hold?
I think it might work best when we talk about goals, the FY26 goals, and talk about that too.
Hold.
Has there been an update on the regional agreement between us and the schools?
Another question I have, we were just talking about that earlier. No. And I believe I sent an email, I actually talked to April about it, and I'm not sure where we're at, so I need to reach back out to the schools.
Who organizes those meetings?
The schools have organized those meetings.
So to certain points, the schools are not a party to the agreement, they're a result of the agreement. It should be just the two towns get together, and we can decide to invite the schools at meetings that are relevant to invite the schools to.
Okay.
Because it is an agreement between our town and the town of Boylston. The result of that agreement is the schools. And I think they should definitely have input, and we should definitely be hearing those. But that, that, that's really, I think, in the best interest of the towns to make sure this goes at a fairly decent pace.
And I think part of the reason for including them from the beginning is there's nuances, things that each of the boards have asked for that may not be allowed, and they know the DESI regulations a lot better than we do.
That it is a moving project, is a moving of the towns, not a project of the schools.
And I think.
Gotcha.
And putting them in charge of causing the meeting, I think, can result in these delays.
Ideally, from my standpoint, this would be on spring.
Yes, yes. I was hoping for spring to meet.
Which means we really need to.
Right, right.
It's the same thing with the strategic report. Where are we after that one meeting that was had?
It went, I went to, there are a bunch of meetings scheduled. There's a bunch of them. I went to the one that we did mission statements.
Oh, that must have been tons of fun. Is your mission statement less than a paragraph? Because any, any mission statement that is four pages long, I'm doing my laundry list in my head.
What it is, but I don't hate it.
Okay.
And data is next, which should be interesting, so.
Okay.
But yes, they are ongoing through the year.
Can you give us an update at some point? Not tonight, but another one. Cool. Thank you.
Sorry. I was thinking if I had other things I should look at. So I think we're ready to move on. Consent agenda. We just have two things tonight. We have two appointments, the Cultural Council, Rebecca Davis and Jane Mullins. And then there's a Section 20 exemption for stand that we can, we vote on as well.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, as one of, I think, several deja vu points for this meeting, other business, 1870 Town Hall Stair Innovation Project.
Yeah, so we've actually talked about that a fair bit. I, the only thing I was looking for guidance from on the board was your comfort level of where to scale back. So, you know, in discussions that I've been having with the architect, we talked about the handrails. We talked about the side commercial stair and the sidewalk going from the side commercial stair to the driveway. And so my, you know, question from the board is, do you feel that that's a sound approach? Is there, I mean, any other components to it that you think absolutely need to go in there? I'm basically trying to salvage the project at this point if possible. And obviously, you know, as we discussed, the cost is exorbitant, so.
Well, that was the question that I had. What can we pick and choose from? You know, is it, leave the granite stairs, obviously, as is shove something under, and obviously not. But, you know, shove something under this so they don't jiggle, and then put in a more suitable railing up the side so that, you know, those who are a little bit more able-bodied can bounce the stairs. And then putting in a stair from the little parking lot over there instead of trying to schlep up the neighbor's driveway and cut that way.
Exactly. And so, you know, he's kind of split it into what he calls a code compliant approach, and then addressing the historic part of the stairs. My concern is if it gets separated too much, I mean, I think we want to make sure we're still addressing historical issues. Obviously, it's CPA, you know, it's a historic building. But he thinks making the repairs to the concrete stair that's existing and the right, on the right side of the building is the least expensive option. But it still doesn't provide that path to the public from the entrance because it's not coming off of our driveway. It's coming off of the neighbor's driveway.
Shared driveway.
We have an easement.
Right. So it's an easement. We have an easement too, so it's still town allowed to use land. I would reluctant to move the stairs as we don't know where the building is going. And if the Bullard House has to wait on all their projects until we understand site drainage, I wouldn't want to put in stairs, discover the new stairs blocked the way we want to do drainage on that side of the building.
Fair.
And it's going to go to a, you know, dirt driveway anyway. So I would, if I could wave my magic wands, it would stabilize the stairs a little bit and do a better hand railing so that helps some people, and then leave the other stairs sort of where they're at.
And the good news is Austin Design is helping with the drainage part of it, which is why it made sense to bring them in on the stairs. So they think what the solution is going to be ultimately is a catch basin over on the Bullard House side that ties into the existing system. But the excavation that will happen, hopefully on the third, will do a test boring in the ground to make sure that that is the right approach. So I don't think it will impact 1870, but I will also ask because they're doing both, which is helpful.
Is that enough? Do you want to vote for us on something, or is that enough guidance for you?
I think that works. I just wanted to have a discussion with you all before it went to the CPA committee to make sure we were on, you know, the right page. One thing I did ask was to get me a cost of each of these individual repairs that he's saying are options here. And so that information I will bring to CPA on, I forget which date it is, and then I can bring it back to the select board for further discussion.
I mean, I think my help would be a project in the, like, you know, again, back to where we first thought, 30,000 to 50,000 range. I think when you start getting bigger than that, I start getting more nervous.
Yeah, and I think you need to look closely, I guess, at which parts of that are actually applicable to CPA funds. Because if it's just like a sidewalk that was there and we're fixing it, that's maintenance, that's not restoration.
Right. But I think the idea that you said, Scott, of stabilizing the stairs and adding the handrail, that should fit. But obviously, that's what we'll discuss with CPA too. So don't necessarily need a vote. I had just put that on there in case you wanted to make one. But this gives me some guidance and a jumping off point.
First parish church matters, the various sort of unwinding of the early 1800s.
Why I know more about clocks than I ever thought I would know.
Right. I would recommend we actually start with the easiest piece, if that works for you, which is the access agreement. They have signed the access agreement. This is an agreement that was, I was given a template, I prepared, it was reviewed by town council. And I would just need a vote from the select board to sign it so we can move forward with the exploration of the leach field on church property for the purpose of upgrading or making recommendations on how to upgrade the shared septic system.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. And I appreciate that their willingness to work on this. And I think everyone involved is trying to find the way to make everyone whole. So a vote, all in favor of the subject access agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
That's three.
Now coming the fun ones.
Yes. And I think for this, it would make most sense to turn it over to our new mini expert on clocks, as all other things, to give an explanation of where we're at and what the church had to say.
Okay. Fundamentally, we own the church clock, we own the flagpole. Neither one of them do, I think, are in wonderful shape. With the clock, I did put in a CPA application to potentially fix the clock. There are a couple of options with that. My main goal when I initially put the application in was to make sure it told time, because right now the three faces don't match. And Barry set it at daylight savings, and the front clock was not matching within like a day. And it's wildly off.
Okay.
So that was my main goal. No, no funds have been put into upgrading what's inside there since like 1952. I think very little maintenance has probably been done since 1952. The second bit would be fixing the face also. It's very worn down. You have to change the hands no matter what. You have to get a steeplejack up there. It probably makes sense to just do it all while he's up there. But it is a significant bumping cost. It's almost twice as much to get the face done because they do the nice gold leaf. But there are beautiful pictures that were provided with the addendum that I had Kristen put in there. So you know what it looks like now, what it would look like should we fix it. It is, when I think, most of us were like, what the heck do we own? Why do we own a clock on a church? Turns out that's pretty normal, because these were meeting houses also, because this was the center of town in New England. Towns often own church clocks. So it's, it's a normal thing.
Although I think we took ownership of this church clock in the 1950s.
No.
When we first started on this path, we took ownership of it in a motion with the select board in the town meetings in the 50s.
I don't think so. I think it was.
Is that when the donation account was set up?
No, the donation account was like the 80s or 90s.
Okay.
I have information, but I think the clock has always been owned by the town. It was probably donated by someone. But I will look again, and I will see if I can get you that information, because that's all paper.
Yeah. I, I'll see what I can find too, because I, I was, when I did a little research on it before, it was a motion in the 50s, I thought, that gave us, got us the clock.
Yeah, I know the mechanisms were changed out in the 50s. I know the, the dinging part of it was disconnected later on.
Right.
I think that's something also at some point you might want to look at fixing, but.
The, the, the money that we have at the town was donated to us to make it make noise. And so if they're already up there, it'd be interesting to know how much more it costs to make, because we could use those funds. And it might not require any CPA funds if someone's already up there, if those funds can make it make noise.
My guess is it's, I don't know what's even up there or connected anymore. I'm not actually sure. I could probably ask the electric time people about that.
My concern is too, is that are people going to be okay with the thing dinging, you know?
Well, her motion isn't to make it ding.
It isn't. This one make it ding. This is just, I think this is where we start. I think we start with upgrading the insides, making it so that nobody's, has to climb that lovely staircase to set the clock. Do you, do you know what has to happen to set the clock?
No, I'm sure it isn't.
There, there is a metal staircase with no guardrails, no nothing that you must climb to set the clock, which is a terrible idea.
I'm sure our insurance company would love to know.
I'm sure they would love to know that. So for me, this falls under, we haven't been taking care of our stuff. We need to take care of our stuff.
Do you need more than one quote?
Not for the CPA funds. And the way this would work is because the clock people are under 10, I would only, we could go with them. And I would, because there's really only one person in Massachusetts that does this. And for the steeple, steeplejack, you need three, because it's, if we go with the full thing where we do the face, we did under the face, that would also be under 10, or didn't do the face, it would be under 10, same thing. Otherwise, we need to do an RFQ, which is three quotes.
But three quotes aren't needed for time meetings. Three quotes are if it passes time meetings to proceed.
Yes. And I would also, unless there was somebody who is, who was as qualified, this is the guy that the clock people recommended. He has multiple clocks that he's done, that he. He has multiple clocks that he's done, that he has provided. So he would be sort of set up as the. This is what we're looking for. He's worked with the equipment. He has a relationship with the clock company.
Here's the thing that just sits in my craw. The church doesn't want the clock, but they're totally fine keeping the clock in the church, but having the town with the bill for that. So that bothers me a little because then I think of little Saint Joseph's around the corner that I don't know if there's town-owned stuff in there and have we reached out to them? And are we showing the same courtesy to offer CPA money to fix something that they may need fixed that they can't afford it? So.
Well, but we don't own anything in Saint Joseph.
Are you sure?
We have nothing on our insurance, so.
Doesn't mean that we don't own.
So I would encourage other buildings that think the town owns things inside their buildings to come forward.
We would want to know about that.
Because the clock has been on our insurance for a long time. That that this issue of talking about the clocks going and that I've not heard other places come up. Because I, again, I've wanted to try to unwind these things, but I think it is easier to unwind it if it's a sort of working clock. Because we have owned it for even in, in my, even in my timeline, we have owned this for seventy years and put nothing into it. So.
Yeah. And, you know, I would recommend if we go down this path, that we start ongoing maintenance and those types of things need to be budgeted for and need to be done. Because it is ours. It is, for me, this, on the grand scale of historical things. For me, this is something that makes a New England town a New England town. That's why it's a town thing.
Clock in the church.
Well, clock in, clock in the center. Clock in the center. It doesn't necessarily, most of their are in churches, but for me, that is what what is says New England town.
And I get that and I understand that, but it's kind of funny. A few of the folks that I've talked to when I've mentioned the clock, their first response was, there's a clock?
Well, it was, I think.
Because it doesn't work. No one looks at it for time and it doesn't chime.
You can't see the, can't see the numbers because they're faded into the building. Because they haven't been restored in forever.
So answer this question for me. Several months ago, when it was just Scott and I, we were presented with a bill to paint the clock. And it was seven hundred dollars or something like that when they were doing the painting. Now, all of a sudden, the bill is just a wee bit larger, so.
I thought it was four thousand.
Was it? So is. Was the clock working back then and we're just going to paint it? Or was it just, we were going to paint a non-working?
We were going to paint a non-working.
We were going to paint a non-working.
And my guess is based on that quote, we were going to have somebody do it who did not restore clocks and was just going to slap some paint on it.
Because they were painting.
This is.
Maybe the building, they would just also paint the clock.
The traditional gold leaf letters.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to to understand why we got one bill for a paint and now all of a sudden we have. Gigantor bill for, oh, there's a lot of stuff wrong with it. So where, where was the disconnect in my mind? But if it was broken and always broken and we were going to paint something.
When I talked.
It's like lipstick.
When I talked to June, she's been here since two thousand eight. She said she's, I think she said, and she's never seen it work till time correctly.
Right. I I I, I agree.
All right.
At the timing.
Even if it was telling time correctly, I'd say we need to upgrade it.
I think the church is about to in the next month or so be covered in scaffolding. So they can fix the broken beam, that that scaffolding would allow some of this access to do the painting with less stuff. But I I don't think we can time it right, so.
Pay for it.
Yeah.
And to that point, you need the MOU as well, which we would want to have council review. I haven't done that yet because I just want a direction from the board.
But this too, this this screams CPA. I found multiple examples of CPA projects that that do this exact same thing. So yeah, this is exactly what CPA was designed for. So that we could keep these sorts of things.
I hate the fact the town owns it, but I think since we do own it, we should fix it and get it working and make it look nice. And so I I'm in favor of doing this. So I would make the motion that we would support this CPA stuff that Lisa kindly put together.
Second.
You have other commentary, Peg?
No, I'm not thrilled with the, hey, we don't want it, but you just go ahead and and pay for it and, you know, everything will look pretty. But it's, that's me. This is a town vote. I'm just one, so I will support you guys.
I think it might be easier to get someone else to take the clock if it was a working clock and didn't need twenty thousand dollars for the repairs. So all in favor of submitting the CPA application, say aye.
Aye.
Submit.
Now let's talk about the pole.
And talk about the pole. So in my research, I found out that the pole is a ship's mast. So it is wooden. It has been there also since the fifties. The, the average lifespan of a ship's mast flagpole is seventy to eighty years.
So we're right on the edge.
So we are right on the edge. My recommendation with the flagpole is, first order of business is to have somebody look at said flagpole to just discover whether it is structurally sound or not. That would be like a, an arborist or somebody of that nature. Because they normally rot from the inside out, so you wouldn't necessarily even see if they were rotting. We also will have no idea what is going on underneath. My guess is they dug a hole and stuck it in there. So the first step is probably to find out structural integrity.
Well, even before that, we have often asked historicals, they go through their collection, to tell this, the historical significance to the town of an item instead of just, hey, this is old, here you go, you can have it. What is beyond, I've got a flagpole you can have. What is the historical significance of that flagpole to the town of Berlin beyond it was donated by the Friends of Tuesday or whoever?
Tuesday, the Tuesday Club.
Yeah.
I have pictures of the Tuesday Club. I don't, my grandmother was a member.
Oh, but what is the history? Again, because if we're.
That would be historical society.
Right. If we're telling historical, stuff that you have from the Cape, get rid of it because it doesn't mean anything to Berlin. But yet, here we are keeping a flagpole. Potentially keeping a flagpole.
I'm not saying keep it. I'm saying we need to make sure it's not going to fall down.
Yeah.
While we make a decision.
I know.
I'm not saying keep it.
But that would be my next question. You know, and then again, if if it's not salvageable. If it's salvageable, why would we pay for it if it has no meaning to the town beyond it was a gift? And if it's not salvageable and it's unsafe, where is the money coming from to take it down?
Actually, highway could probably take it down.
We can put a rope on it and pull it.
I think highway can take it.
You get to help.
The cost of keeping it is probably more than the cost of taking it down.
It's not a whole lot different than taking a tree down. But you need to also to take it down, you need to know structural integrity, so you know what you're dealing with.
Right. It's not going to snap in the middle as you.
Correct. And it goes flinging into sixty two.
And I don't have funding. I don't know how much an arborist would be.
I don't know. My guess is, I was wondering whether Fred might have something in his budget. I don't think that's much. I haven't really gone down that path. I was gonna, I was gonna refer you maybe to Carolyn because they, she has one that the town works with sometimes and.
Okay.
Yeah, because Maddie, when is Maddie coming back? Lovely Maddie, or is Maddie coming back? He's an arborist.
Maddie is not.
No, but there is one, right?
Is Julia an arborist?
I don't think so, but I'll talk to Carolyn.
That was just.
They know people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maddie knows everybody.
And I think there's even a tool or a, that you just probably point at it and I don't know.
Please tell me it's not an auger.
No, no, no. I forgot my favorite part of the flagpole. My favorite part is there are actual climbing rungs. So low that a child could climb them and that to me is an attractive nuisance that we either need to get signage up. We need to, we need to take them down. We need to, that is, for me, is an immediate concern.
And that is how a certain resident of this town shimmyed up the pole.
Painted, right?
And painted it.
Yeah.
Just crawled up it.
But that, like I said, I think, I think that is a huge liability that we have docked. So we need to.
Can we count them off?
I'm, I'm happy with whatever. I just don't, I don't think, I don't think it's safe for them to be there.
But you know, as soon as we advertise it, there will be somebody who tries to do it. It's on, yeah, I know, I know. But now that you know about it, it's, it was kind of like the parking spaces. Now that you knew.
But if they're low enough, I'm surprised that they're, you haven't kid, have kids swinging off of them. They're.
Not at all.
One, I think one part of this discussion would be ongoing maintenance for if anything has to happen with like the pulley system, because I know Fred was mentioning there were issues when we were trying to lower it. Also, who will.
Get caught.
Right. And we would have funding to replace the flag as well as someone to deal with it when it's not working.
Yeah. And that's a, for me, that's a longer, longer term discussion. We decide we go, we need to, no. Right now, we need to address the immediate, like, is it going to fall down? Can we keep people off of it?
So I I would almost immediately not have flags on it anymore. Because at the very least, a flag on it adds more structural stress than anything else. I would also then at least not have the light on. I wouldn't necessarily disconnect the lighting just in case we decide to keep the thing. But but let's start lessening the, the work of the highway department to raise and lower flags and replace flags and do the other stuff by just. It's also winter and so it's also not great to like, I keep a flag outside my house on a pretty regular basis, but it tends to come down around Thanksgiving. It doesn't go back up until May, not only disrespect to the, well, pretty out of respect for the flag, not disrespect for the, but I mean, that that it just, it's not great to have it in the weather and so.
And traditionally, it's only lit when there is a flag there, like the one at the podium office. So if there's no flag up there.
Right.
That's actually on a timer.
Right.
And the timer box is wide open.
Right.
So anybody can go and fix that.
So yes, I I would, i- if we could, I would make such a motion to remove flags from the flagpole right now. And to, I would also, if there's a way to easily do it, throw a circuit breaker so there is no power going to said light or future or timer box.
Question on the timer box. Sorry, on Fig Book, that the Lions have put up lights, the trees on the town. Aren't those plugged in?
Do they go to that? There's actually electric right next to the flagpole.
Oh, okay. Because for, in terms of wiring, my understanding is they plug into. It's on church property.
But we pay.
But it's ours and we pay the, yes.
So.
So it could be that.
I don't know. So before we're flipping anything off, I think we need to.
Check. Electric, yeah, make sure it's not going to affect the Christmas lights.
I know, I know, but I I just.
Things we don't think about that if it's not set. I mean, yeah.
If someone is doing something free off of the town.
I know.
But you'd be surprised it goes away.
Like to shut the lights off, but at the same time too. I know last year they came to us and asked.
If he at least gets this, there's not a light on an empty flagpole.
Yeah.
We get my intent.
They may have gone to to fire. I don't know. Let me find out. This is the first I've heard. It's gone up, so.
I drive by on the way home, so I'll get a chance.
Could you check? Yeah, okay.
So I think you had a motion to at least try to turn the light off.
Yeah, turn the light off and remove the bug. Yep. Sorry, second to that.
Second.
More discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And obviously we want to notify the church, so they're just aware because it is on their property.
Yep.
Yeah, because they, you know, one of the reasons they don't like the flagpole is anytime something goes wrong with the flagpole, they get blamed for it. Even though they don't own it. So they would not cry, they would not cry any tears if the flagpole went away, was my impression.
Yeah, no, they basically said absolutely, we, on no uncertain terms, want the flagpole.
Right. If it isn't good structural, say, we potentially could relocate it somewhere else if it's a really.
Well, it is a historical item, so if you take it down, you just have to take a cross section and save it. You have to take a piece of it and give it to historical.
Become the new flagpole.
And the plaque, they get the plaque too. I know.
During the thousand mile starts, the first couple of steps. Couple of steps tonight. We're making progress on all of these really messy things tonight.
A flagpole is considered a structure.
I I am.
Just like a building, it's considered a structure.
I I am an optimist tonight. I think these are all messy things that I feel like. Right. I feel like we made progress on all of them. I wasn't expecting all to get to an end on any of these. I think we're making, I feel good progress.
Yeah, this was my hyperfixation for the last month.
Yeah.
There you go.
I appreciate the hyperfixation. I think it has helped us get places on it.
And then the final thing is the MOU. Because we own things on church property and have no formal agreement.
Right.
I believe we should have a formal agreement about how this operates for the safety of both us and the church.
Right. I think some of it is going to, we're going to reduce the entanglements. But it looks like at least for the period of time, like, what is our access rights to the clock and what is, what is there in church?
Who pays for the electricity? Currently, it's them. We want to make sure that continues.
Yeah, I I imagine, I mean, I think there's some ongoing conversation with the church that a bunch of things, and it could be on some points they give and on some points we give so that we end up with an agreement that that allows everything to move forward and clarity of of boundaries. That are a hundred and forty years old. Messiness.
I like this plan. I, I think Fred will like it too. I don't want to speak for him, but you know, like you said, either the church or we're getting calls when things are supposed to be half staff, half, half staff and the flag's not working properly.
Right. And as as you're on the flagpole, there's maintenance of it, there's work of raising and lowering flags, there's replacement of flags. This is taking one small thing off of the highway department that.
And we have a flag on, we have a flag here.
Yeah, right. This is, this is, this is the center of town. And we renovated eighteen seventy nine, we put something out the front of the building.
Even if it were to go down, it probably couldn't go down until spring.
Right.
So.
Right.
We, we still need to do the things, but. So I'm going to motion chip for the MOU unless somebody has
I will.
Comments or questions.
You know, I I could dibble with some things, but I think it's significantly better than what we have right now, which is nothing.
Anything is better. Mr. Philosopher, anything you want to comment on that?
No, I I agree. You know, this is, this is not the hill to die on. We start here and as we go along, we find changes, we make them.
Yeah, the church has been a good partner. I imagine they'll continue to be a good partner, just like many of the institutions in town are great partners. Uh, so all in favor of the member of our understanding, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Goals. I don't think we're reading all fourteen of them.
Did an update in the column on where we're at with each of them.
Do you want to start off with just your questions and comments and we'll go from there?
Yeah, so Kristen, you had provided us a screenshot of the whiteboard in your office that had the projects that you're currently working on. So my first question is how do those projects align with your goals? Because one would assume that they would need to match, that you're working on things that we've asked you to work on. And secondly, in regard to the project, project list, it's a lovely list, but there's no information on it. It was kind of like your goals when we first started. Start date, end date, where are you? Where are you stuck? Who are you waiting on? And again, these are just things off the top of my head, so that when you come to us and as you've said, you know, things get a little bit behind. Now that we're in budget season, things may get more behind. I would love for us, for the board, for the three of us to sit there and go, oh, look at this one. You've reached out ten times to this person and guess what? They haven't responded. So you go from one to twenty five and until you step up, we're not doing anything with. So I mean, but without that data, you know, it's, it's hard to say, yes, you're working on the right things. Yes, you're moving things forward. And if you remember when we were at nineteen Carter, that was one of the first items is that people didn't know what was going on with projects in town. And I think if you had something similar, you know, to that, so people could see, oh, here's the update on the bridge. Oh, here we are with the pavilion. Oh, here we are with the this and the that and everything else. That may on the, what do you all actually do on a Monday night behind the table?
Well, and I I'm hoping that from that talk at nineteen Carter, that folks will review the town administrator reports, which is where I do really try to provide that update. My concern is if I spend, I know what they asked for was like a projects page on the website. My concern is. My concern is spending more time developing that, and then if people not looking at the website because we already have information, they're not looking at on the website. So I agree, I wanna get that information out there and I wanna give you guys that information so you can help guide some of the decisions of all of the things that have come forward, and you need more information and not, my certainly was my intent to give you more. I just wanted to give you a quick hey, I have time to take a picture of the whiteboard in my office, but yeah.
I really appreciate it. There are things that make it to the whiteboard that aren't part of your goals because something came up. Somebody quits, there's an accident somewhere, there's a fire and ambulance, repairing the new ambulance that on fire was not on the list of goals because there's no way any of us could do those things. So so trying to, I I as much as I like information, I also realize that collecting piece of information and updating piece of information takes time. And and so, I mean, I I I don't think I need to feel a need to like, you know, pinged Fred yesterday is something that's updated on a regular basis. I thought the summaries of the notes of the status of the project was actually quite comprehensive where things are at sort of currently at them. Um, uh, I might have some that I think are, I'd love to just make go away, but I know that I'm a minority on some of those predictions. I bet all of us have a list and I guess their lists aren't necessarily the same.
Well, and just to be clear too, that kind of snapshot I put forth was what I would call like a ninety day snapshot. Um, there is a lot more, and that's what I wanna make sure I get to you too. What is sitting and hasn't even made it to the whiteboard yet?
And that's where, you know, again, the 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 part of me, the magical someone needs to do all this, you know, I'd love to be able to say oh, people who want updates, well, fork someone over and spend an hour with you and you just rattle off and then they come back every three weeks, you know, for an update, so it doesn't fall to you, it doesn't fall to Dee, but I know that my magical we is kind of like the unicorn, it just doesn't exist. Um, of people who ask for and demand, but yet when we turn and ask for help, they suddenly go quiet and run away. So it's 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 a hard thing to try and wrap it around and volunteers are awesome and many people volunteer for multiple things and I don't wanna kill them. Um, you know, by asking them to do more, it's it definitely is that rock and hard place. So if you wanna know what's going on, well, hey, can you help be involved? Well, no, sorry, I don't have time.
Yeah, I think too, um, I think there are specific projects. I don't think it's every project that people wanna know about. I think if you blasted out an update of where the South Street Bridge is every once in a while, or foot a standing thing about that particular thing, or anything that's very sort of high profile. I think that's enough. I don't think you need to do every single project. I think you need to do the ones that are like driving people nuts on a daily basis, like the fact they can't get across that bridge.
Well, and now especially with the Whitney Bridge shutting down next week too, there's already been comments about, oh, well, look, their bridge will be as close as long as Berlin's Bridge, and I'm like, oh.
Probably closes long as Berlin Bridge cuz the same the same shit slowed us up. The state doesn't get back to people in time, they 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 it sits on design engineering. How, for a simple bridge, how long that sat for design approval?
I was gonna tell you that we received word right before Thanksgiving that there's a new reviewer and he has new questions, so I am reaching out tomorrow to the state reps to say, what can you do? I talked to VHB, they wanted to give it one more shot. They thought they were really close, so I said, all right, let's do it. And now a new reviewer and we're back in the
The churn of state employees has cost us a year.
Yeah.
I mean, this bridge would be open and done now.
We wouldn't have all the funding, but yeah, I mean, we could have gone into
In 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 theory, we might have had the funding because it wouldn't have been delayed so long that we needed a second round of funding to, because it got more expensive.
That's true.
I mean, that that uh it is just ridiculous what it takes to get what is not like, and that's because it's a complicated bridge.
Yeah, and I think when you explain those things to people and you you let them know, that is the single most frequent question I get asked. What about that bridge? What's going on with that South Street Bridge? So just when there's big obnoxious things.
Well, and
Put something prominently.
Yeah.
On the front page, on the
And we talked to Fred about it every month and we do other places, but you're right, people don't watch these meetings, people won't read to her report, people are Fred's report. And sadly, the, for a year, it has been, nothing has happened, nothing has happened, it's not on us. Because when the state has asked us things, I think generally you and Fred have gotten back to the state within a day or two of them, if not even hours.
Right, and it's the engineers that have been on it and they've gotten right back as well, and they notified us, hey, we got comments back, we're working on it, this is when we anticipate to submit them by. This is we anticipate to hear from back from the state. I do have one idea though. Brittany actually reached out to me after the talk at nineteen Carter, and she said if I ever wanted to do like fifteen minute segments like Q and A, like she would film, she used to do this, I guess, for the Hubbardson Town Administrator. Um, and he would just give brief project updates, and what I was just thinking might be really helpful is if you guys, either one of you gave, said the questions to me while she was filming, or if you all gave me a list of things you're being asked, then I could just speak briefly on each of those. We could put it on YouTube, put a link to it on the homepage and do it that way. And that would take a lot, I think, a lot less time than trying to write up everything that's in my head. Which is a scary place right now.
Yeah, cable access, you could probably also have a slide deck that just has the current updates on a half dozen projects that spends sixty seconds on each slide that once a month you just do a
Do it a quick update?
A quick update on, because if you're not rewriting, I would never expect to rewrite it, but like last update South Street Bridge, instead of saying, you know, October first, now says November eleventh, like, and there has not been a change.
It could literally be slides of your TA report.
Right, right. Some of the paragraphs of the DA report, yeah.
And if you ask me even just the questions, you know, if you know, you're you're really bored on a Wednesday afternoon, you wanna come in and fire some questions at me and I answer them. I mean, obviously, if there's something very specific, I'd have to look up and come back to, but I think we could get some info out that way. I haven't quite figured out how to make that work with Brittany, but she has offered and I thought it was a great idea.
Well, I mean, if it works for another town, just borrow it, just re purple it.
Borrow, steal.
Yeah, I think I've actually seen for town meeting too. I know we do the informational session, but I think having a much shorter one without the questions where Kristen just sort of blasts that off, I would like to see that also. I think that would be helpful, and then you put it right up next to the town meeting link and
I like that. We used to actually do the town meeting info session in Leicester. We took all questions at the end, and the town administrator went through the warrant one by one. Um, and you know, you kind of were able to just not speed through, but give a brief overview of each, and then you can capture some of those questions on the backend. And then that could be filmed and just put up on.
And I I would think that it would stop the fiction that truly turns into fact when it's not. I was posed with a question the other week about um um, how much money we're currently spending to redo town hall? And my response was, how much?
You talking about this project upstairs?
No, just like, no, town hall, eighteen seventy.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, that there's already been money budgeted and we're gonna redo all of town hall, and I'm like, no way.
Someone's come already given us money for that.
Apparently, so
Apple likes it just the way it is, and we're waiting to see if they get greenlit for another season.
I think Apple will be totally fine if we painted those staircases and removed those falling blaster.
They literally said, don't touch a thing, cuz I told them we were gonna paint and do the interior carpet, and they said
I'll talk to you later about how I know they will be totally fine if we fix those sort of things.
Yeah, but I mean, it's stuff like that that is whizzing around the town is fact.
Right.
And
It's not, and we re-appropriated that ARPA money to the demo, to the the fire station demo, right? Well, and and you know, to some extent, there's always gonna be rumors, there's always going to be what I call the Facebook noise. Um, you know, and and I think we we do our best, but also there are sources of information that are readily available. You three, me, Dee, email, you, phone call.
Our website has some good stuff on it. Watch Ted, watch a meeting out there. They're not the most, none of, no, tell me these are exciting, which is good. It is good that our meetings are not so, it's exciting that they're on Channel Five.
And you said the website is coming along, coming along?
Yeah.
Yes, so we have, we've done the updates that we could do with um Capital Strategic Solutions, and now I forget which date the meeting is on.
December tenth.
Thank you. So next week, um, we are going to be doing some training on the new, is it CSM? I always forget what it's called. It's it's not Drupal anymore. It's, I wanna say CMT, but I think that's country music television. Um, I think it's CMS. I I'm not, you know, a web person, but
Medicaid study, Medicare studies?
Yeah, so uh the other thing is getting key people trained on it, um, on the departments that need frequent updates. You know, if it's an update here and there, like throw up a flyer or change this wording or put the new tax rate up. That's something we can do quickly through our office, particularly, especially if the wording is provided to us. We can just cut and paste and do it. But like police, fire, uh, you know, other departments, we will need help um to do those, and they can do themselves too with the training.
And all your chairs do too theoretically. I do my own website updates for Housing Trust. So all of those folks need to have training too.
Okay.
Carolyn does all of the ones for conservation.
She do PB too?
Tim does energy.
Can we, we wanna have multiple people on this first Zoom? Can we send out a email to the boards and committee chairs and see who would like to join? Cuz there's gonna be a couple, this is
One of them should be in the evening.
And can it be recorded because of it during the day?
Evening, we'll have to ask. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cuz people work.
Yep. So at least if you could record it, you know, and maybe if there's ten steps on how to update a committee member, update a expiration date or something, a little job aid that they could provide, so I
Like a handout, can we get a handout kind of thing?
A one, two, three, and cha, cha, cha.
Okay. Like on most frequently
Yeah.
To the web, most frequently updated sections and how to do it kind of thing.
Hopefully, it's a lot more intuitive than
That's what they're saying, cuz it's more of like a, once you're logged in, you actually click on the way that it is looks on the page and you can make a change right there, rather than having to go into headed, into a cabinet, into the back you know, way, which is just absurd. Although I will tell you, it's better than first uh class. We had first class for a long time. That was actually folders within folders that you had to go in and find documents. It looked like a separate like shared drive, so we're we're getting progressively better.
I would say of the goals, I was one just impressed that several of these I hadn't heard for a while, there's some progress on. I don't think, again, uh, the the number of like large, substantial transformative projects on this list that are all done in a relatively short number of years, you know, are on it, you know, the the renovation of the second floor of this building, the radio projects, phases one, two, and three, that suddenly will give us much better, clearer, stable communications between police and fire and and on frequencies, I think even help us with mutual aid. Remember correctly on that as well?
We're aligning ourselves with dispatch along the way, so that our equipment upgrades match theirs.
And and can you please make the comment that the communication will not impact personal cell phones, so that when you're driving down South Street and everyone, everyone knows where that dead spot starts and where it ends, then this is not
It's not cellular.
This is not cellular, so if you could make
Right.
To say, no.
Right, this is to make sure the 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 police and fire department can talk to each other, even if there is a cell coverage dead spot. But cell coverage dead spots are you can call your carrier and ask them to fix that. The town is no, no really say over that. But I mean, the whole, you have one line that just says facility plan implementation, and although we did sort of talk about the messy building, we've actually talked about a bunch of buildings. We've done some work in this building. We've we've, we have a plan to get rid of some buildings. I think some several things have happened on on that front. Complete streets is again another thing you could say in one sentence is a giant thing that could be transformative in a town that is making uh uh progress. Um, I mean, I I think that that several of these are are big projects that really are gonna seriously help the town for the long term.
And they're multi-year projects.
Multi-year project.
And if you look at twelve thirteen, where you're talking about a development of calendar events and or, you know, planning for increasing civic engagement and involvement. That could be taken care of of, hey, did you know that there's a blah, blah, blah meeting, you know, when you're a quick little fifteen minute
Thirteen is on here, but thirteen uh uh for civic involvement uh is is really, I think, a discussion on our part, and how do we get not just uh uh uh, I mean, getting more people running for offices so that we have more contest election, getting feeling the more of the community, getting people to volunteer and come forward and and be the person who might help make sure that there's a slide deck on the on the uh cable access that lists sort of the various projects going on and and that sort of some of this sort of communication is not just on the, even the three of us, there are boards, commissions that could easily be doing their own press releases and and other pieces like that. And fourteen is like, is like catchall, which is just creating efficiencies with technologies, it's just that you know, I think process group is a non, is an ongoing, constant thing to be aware of. And I think in budget seasons, usually we're like, why do we have two staff people do this? Why can't we use technology to get us to just one? Um, uh, there more comments on on the goals?
No, I think, I think it's obvious you're busy and you're working. I don't
Right.
Well, yeah, I know town administrator wants to
I think it's obvious.
Right, no, no town administrator wants to come forward and say, I'm overloaded and I can't get to everything, but there have been delays on a few things like the demo of the buildings. And I know that that nags at me, and I know that's frustrating to you guys, so I just wanted to give you the universe and you know, where, in all honesty, sometimes I have to make choices about what's more urgent than others and things are going to sit, and I just want you all to know before we get to that place where, oh, that just never got done, and I don't want that to happen.
Right, and and in in our agenda, say, you and I've had conversations about how do we uh help you with that conversation? So that it is more conscious of like, this is gonna be delayed a bit because these other things come up, and we can go, yes, we're 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 fine with that if there's a motion needed to say, yes, these have been deprioritized, this is a new thing on the list.
Right.
Um, uh, how do we have some of those conversations? Cuz it is one of those things that, especially in a public body, if we said you know, Peg, we've decided that your project's no longer important, we will suddenly get five calls from people who love Peg's project. Um, and and uh sort of how do we
There will be no one who likes any of my projects, so you're all good.
I I did it this spring, when I tried to cancel everything out of the budget, so I I feel you're coming from.
You're next.
That's right. You get the take of the hack at the list of projects. Now, I will have that for twelve fifteen, though I'd like to put it back on and give you kind of the bigger stuff that's still out there.
Uh, so on to Dee, we have on January twenty-sixth, we have Senator Kennedy, Representative Calcoyne coming here for a visit. Uh, to get the most out of the visit, uh, if there were, to give them some heads up of things to prepare for and talk on. We should have some.
So can we um come up with some clever wording? GPT chat queen Lisa on something that maybe we can push out to the town, so they're not questions from us, but here's an opportunity, town folk, yours, your senator and your representative are gonna be like, right here. And you can reach out and touch and ask him a question, what keeps you up at night? So I don't know, maybe there's a form or something that you could come up with that we could put out online that goes back and we can
I would say that's, that's not entirely what this particular visit is about. I think that that um the staff comes every month over to nineteen Carter, sometimes um Senator Kenny or Rep Calcoyne are also there. But um there are other venues, many other venues for those types of things. This is for governance.
Okay.
Right, and I think they do, but you know, I have the constant frustration that this state really, I think, gets in our way more than helps us in a lot of areas. I think the South Street Bridge is a great effort of that. I think our recall petition that is not quite yet approved yet. About a time, it takes us what?
OEMS, oh, we have train paramedics and they can't work.
Right.
It's state law.
Yeah, that's certainly, those are the things that that we should be discussing. The Home Rule petition um, for the recall should be done by end of year, I believe, based on what Maddie said.
Uh, I think the other area, uh the uh, one of the major television channels on their evening news talked about how uh state funding to towns and and cities has not kept up with inflation and pointed out that the average city in town gets nineteen percent of their budget from the state uh, in unrestricted sort of, and I don't think we're are we even five percent?
Yeah, if we go, if we go back through the the uh um event that I attended at Cyprian Keys where they were talking about state budgets. Um, there are some great statistics in there that we can pull out to say, state mandate, you want us to so, but you don't give us any money, to blah, 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 so what's your plan? You know, type of thing.
And I get to there too of, you know, that they do not universally control these sort of things, but it's definitely the 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 frustrations, both of the unfunded mandates. Um, and just, we, I don't feel we, we we regularly talk about how we're this sort of, you know, uh, town that has people who are struggling to pay their property taxes, which is true in other places as well, but we get no money from the lottery. We get very little money from 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 the state. I don't even think the schools get what the same percentage of that other places goes, that we are treated as a much wealthier suburb, which we are not.
Well, and I also think
Cuz I don't think we are.
No, no, I I think that the biggest thing that's coming out that I'm hearing through my town administrator listservs is this realization that the state can require, or the state mandated education increases are going up like five to six percent per year. but we can only go up by two and a half. So if you don't have new growth to fill that gap, as we've talked about, what can you do? And so, again, I don't know if Prop two and a half reform would ever happen, but I think, you know, putting that, it's probably on their radar, but those are the kinds of conversations I think we need to have.
The problem with Prop two and a half too was I believe that was a ballot initiative.
Yeah.
So the legislature is actually a bit stuck.
Ah, gotcha.
And it's something is that I I have uh raised to them personally, just the idea that I think at a certain level of special education needs should be a state responsibility and not a district responsibility. Because what's happening is that some of these students move from District One to District Two and they have to start the negotiation process all over again for uh the new plans, which is, I think, horrible for continuity for the for the children. Um, but it's also uh these programs where these kids go, you know, we have to negotiate or we, this, our school district has to negotiate with a one-on-one where the state could say, look, we're giving you all of your students. And so it's not going to be a hundred thousand dollars students, it's going to be eighty thousand dollars a student, you know, so that they are. Uh, so I think there's some efficiencies that come out of of having the state hold that bucket instead of towns. And then we don't have this yo-yo of, you know, this this high need student that deserves a good education comes to our town and so everyone scrambles. And then the parents get a new job, move to Pittsfield, and suddenly Pittsfield has to deal with that. And suddenly we, and magically the school, of course, never says, oh, now have the five hundred thousand dollars back. Um, uh, right? Because when have they ever said, oh, gosh, all the special, a bunch of, we have a much lower specialized kids needs this year. So we don't need to do a big increase. It's always the other direction, so. And again, th- those kids need to get a good education, but I think there are better ways of doing it, better ways of funding it.
So do you want questions that we come up with shipped to you? Do you want them presented and then we'll chit-chatty about them at the board?
I was thinking, yeah, if you could send them to me by in the in the next week and a half, then I can put it on the fifteenth and we can give them a good amount of time because don't forget the holidays are in there too, but give them some time to be able to.
Okay, and they're actually going to like be here.
I don't know how much you need to actually fully agree, need to agree on the questions. I mean, because uh it's not like it's a motion or petition of the town and I think it gives them some talking points and.
Yeah, and there's nothing on there that both of them can't answer.
Right.
And if there's sort of overlap, I can also kind of consolidate like I did for the assessor.
You can do, yeah, do a little bit of a cleanup and.
So actually, if you're okay, if you want to send them to me even by the end of this week, if possible, I will get it together. Um, and I will CCU or VCCU on it when we send it over to the state.
Yeah. It started forty-five minutes ago.
They did.
Oh, good. I I don't have it up on my screen or I wouldn't be able to focus as bad as I am, so. And I know, so if you know this guy, you don't have anything playing under screen for anyone at home, so.
Well, the next ones are hopefully relatively.
Yes. So it is uh alphabet soup, uh license renewal time, A, B, C, C, which is uh liquor licenses and other license renewals. Um, all the renewals, uh, because they're required uh by state law, I'm sure, um, that we have listed them on the agenda. And so anybody following at home, uh, you can go and look at our agenda the twenty-first to look at the list because I am not going to read the names of all seventy-five or so licenses we have. It is neat, some people have multiple licenses, uh, but it is a nice list of businesses that are actually here in our town.
And we are required to list them on the agenda.
Yep.
So there they are, but the first, there's actually three separate motions, one for E, one for F, and one for G in your file. So if you were willing to start with the liquor license renewal certification.
I thought there was one and I had it in front of me, so.
Both of you sure and I are like.
I know, it's like, wait a minute, I have a different spot. Um, I moved that the pre- the premise is described in the twenty twenty-six renewal application for the town of Berlin, now occupied, used or controlled by licenses will be on January first, twenty twenty-six.
Seconded.
Uh, is there any discussion about the, I'm assuming all these businesses are up to date on their fees, that there is nothing outstanding uh on any of police or fire?
For liquor, do you want?
There, there's most, most everything is in. I have um two businesses that haven't paid for their um one ten inspection yet, but they have been inspected. They know that they haven't paid and they have promised to send that in with the form. Um, and there is.
Right, I was gonna say, and I I think our motion is contingent on them paying the fee for license, but minus the fee.
That is correct. Right, no ticky, no shirty, no checky, no licensing.
They're just looking over a decent space because I'm.
Did we vote?
Oh, yes, all, all, yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I moved the, oh, right, this is my favorite one.
Our seasonal.
Our seasonal population, the the, speaking of things the state requires us to do, we have to tell the state what our seasonal change of population is. And so I moved the seasonal population increase estimated for the town of Berlin on July first, twenty twenty-six uh to be determined to be zero, that we really are not a seasonal community.
Second.
No coastal vacation homes.
Right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And then is that the third one, the one that I?
One is probably the one, yeah.
Motion for license renewal.
Okay. I move the board approve uh the renewal of all licenses listed on the meeting agenda contingent upon compliance and with satisfactory compliance with and satisfactory result of the requirements of the town of Berlin, Calhoun, Massachusetts, and the A, B, C, C, including payment of all fees, which is the Alcohol Bureau Control Commission, right? Close enough, right?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Thank you, Dee, because I'm sure that you were the chaser downer.
Yes.
Of all the ones in the quarter together, so appreciate.
Thank you. You spent a lot of time putting a checklist together for this year that I think was really helpful for businesses and um this has been a huge undertaking, so thank you.
Second year for the checklist.
Oh, sorry, second year.
Yes.
And I remember when I did this before that they came in batches over many, many, many weeks.
It was a pain to keep track of which ones.
Really cool.
I remember needing to try to keep track of which ones we've already done and which ones left, left to do it. And again, I encourage people watching, if you define this thing and support the businesses that are here in Berlin, they they pay both fees and taxes and I'm sure many of them even employ residents. Um, and so that takes us to board questions and liaison updates. Uh, take it away, Peg.
All right, real quick, uh, Rec, Christian, uh, Kristen already mentioned about the, a bunch of them. Big shout out to Fire Mike and his crew. They met me over there, over there being eighteen seventy, where uh took three of them to move that rather heavy cabinet out of the former office for the uh eighteen seventy town manager and we pushed it up against the wall with the drawers that way. So you know what? You want to go in and see what's in there? Be my guest, try to move that thing. But it's allowing Rec to move their stuff in, to put it on town insurance, to get it off of their uh, out of their private houses. I explained to them that it's only temporary and using our friend GPT chat, wrote like a quick something for them next year that maybe they could present to CPA to buy a shit. So.
Awesome.
That is uh in that, so thank you, um, Fire Mike, for sending those folks over. FinCom, they're meeting Wednesday, um, they get a bunch of stuff going on. They'll be talking about the real Wheeler Dam and Randall Road and trail maintenance, the parking lot up on Lyman's, um, community outreach for Tohonto and the library, uh, where the librarian Hudson is doing story walks around pieces of land and Berlin is trying to do the same thing for that. Uh, energy, there's no current meeting, uh, Lions items, some were found in the old fire station. There were some found.
They were in a hidden spot.
They were in the hidden spot, but I reached out to one of the head lion guys and asked him, shared the picture and he said, yes, they are all ours. Uh, asked him to get in touch with Fire Mike so that they are personally escorted uh into the building and we moved. Uh, question, there was a letter that came in on November third from a resident regarding a national grid pole issue right on the Clinton line and was wondering if we've done anything with that because I would just hate to fall, have that fall through the cracks.
Let me double check. I thought that we had sent that along, but I will confirm.
Okay.
And let you know.
All right, um, and then this is probably on me. I keep getting reminders to sign from the Massachusetts Office of Comptroller to sign things, DocuSign, I've got like four reminders.
Yes.
Do I sign them or not?
Yes, and actually, I'm glad you brought that up because they reminded me today. So the, that's for the Mass Cultural Council Grant.
Okay.
I am, I cannot both sign and be authorized to sign.
Yep.
So I put myself as the authorized signatory. You have to sign what's called a castle form in order. You, you.
Me.
Why do we have you? Oh.
I was gonna say.
You were set up in the system, that's what it was. So they had you on there as the signatory, so unless we want to switch things.
No, I'll sign it. I will sign it before I go.
It is legitimate.
I'm finally signing.
Yes, I, I wasn't sure and I don't want to sign something that I don't really know, quite know what it is, so I looped the town into something. Um, and a question that maybe can come up on another um agenda is given the abundant amount of projects that you're juggling, that you're juggling over there. Can we please look and have a serious discussion on the Powderhouse News?
Please.
I mean, how long it takes you for the little amount of feedback that you're getting from people? Again, I'm just trying to look for efficiencies, if there's something that we can take off your plate and off your plate. Because think about it, if only twenty people are getting it mailed to and there's twelve hundred, you know, folks like me who are old and get it, that's what? Point oh one percent, is it really worth the effort? Or can we do something if we're maybe going to go down the path with Brittany and doing something on cable? Can we move that and then AKA that becomes a cost?
I tried to cut it from the budget um for FY twenty-six and FinCom did not want it cut. But as we heard loud and clear at nineteen Carter, that they do not find the information timely nor relevant. And we do have to submit the information almost a month or three weeks before the publishing comes out, so I can understand that to some extent.
And and realistically, they've just been copies of Fire Mike and Eric and Fred's report because people aren't in yours and people that aren't putting articles in, you're doing free advertising for nineteen Carter again. So personally, I see little value, so Chairperson Scott, if we could ding an agenda item, it's not like a hill to die on, but.
How does FinCom have the state to add it? They can only cut things that are sent to them. Who sends them the budget in the first place? The Powderhouse News, isn't that a select board budget, don't line it up?
It's in the town administrator expense budget right now.
Right.
So that was one of my recommended cuts.
Right.
And I think you backed it, but they did not want it removed.
Yeah.
Oh, I know why.
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you could just, I mean, if you want to do something, just put up a letter, once again, have ChatGPT spin you out a letter that you throw up on the website.
Yep.
So. Lettered from the TA staff.
I have to tell you, I've been throwing my ton of.
Or Google Gemini, yes, yeah, I tried out both.
Google Gemini is included with the enterprise version of.
Yep, so we could do that again, just to take a wee bit off your plate and a wee bit off your plate and.
That would be.
Make it better or that'd be awesome. And I am done.
Lisa?
Um, most of my stuff has come up with other things. I did want to give a shout out to Melissa because her Veterans Day event was the most well-attended event I have seen.
Yes.
Um, and it was wonderful to s- to see everybody there having a good time.
Has been substantially up on some of the things that she has done.
I believe she said it was thirty-one attendees. I will confirm that, but that room was full.
Yeah. And then the the strategic plan, like I said, those are a series of ongoing meetings for the regional school district. The last one was mission statements and core values, so um the next one will be data. Um, Housing Trust, we will be getting going on that project and I'll have more of that.
We'll get uh all the legal involved and figure out all of our.
Yeah, right now I wanted to, before anything happens, I want to make sure that if, when that property transfer happens, um, that we stay on the insurance until the final project because I don't want that to happen because I'm not as the housing trust dealing with insurance.
Right.
Yes, and I did reach out to.
You did, but I don't think that anything was back.
Ah, his question was, is the housing trust, does the housing trust have a separate EIN from the town? That would be, which you don't, so um I will write him back and tell him no. And then his, the other thing he asked was, the town has slash is in the process of getting ownership to the trust and will no longer be responsible for the building. Is that correct?
Well, I think, I think we still are because the trust is fundamentally an entity of the town, but I wanted to verify that.
That's all right.
I mean, fundamentally, the the trust, while it has certain statutory things, I think we are an entity of the town, but I, I.
Right.
I'd rather find out now than later.
All right, so I'll write, I'll tell him it's fundamentally an entity of the town. It does not have a separate EIN. Um, but we haven't done this before, so we want to confirm that we are doing it the right way.
And if, if that is the case, we will just wait until to do that transfer until later, but hopefully it's not and we can just get that done.
All right.
Um, I just want to say for the meeting on the fifteenth, I think we're going to be fairly public safety focused. Um, we have both police and uh fire EMS coming in during their regular presentation. But I think we're also going to talk about advanced life support and the process uh going forward there. We actually have to talk about jail cell toilets, which is, I'm sure, one of our favorite topics to talk about. Uh, I will also be talking about uh parking enforcement in the town as well.
You know how expensive those things are, the jail house toilets?
Yes, I have a number written behind me, so.
Oh, my God, they're like seventy grand.
Oh, that, this one is not that.
Oh, no, because I had talked to Eric when we were doing the ADA, trying to put that in and it's the whole, you may need to dig stuff up and all that others, so.
I think this is fixing what is there as opposed to replacing what is there. Um, and so we we might put other sort of public safety there and so uh that is mostly. And then I'm expecting that we'll do an executive session at the next meeting, uh, just for uh updates. There's a bunch of sort of ongoing uh raises, so there's just ongoing legal stuff out there. There wasn't anything sort of ready for this meeting, hoping that another couple of weeks, some of those things might percolate. So it could be a short executive session where Kristen just tells us is exactly where it was last time we talked. Um, but there could be some changes on some of those. Um, uh, and so that's what I think we're planning for then.
Yeah, there's, it's a lot and it made sense to have them come, not this meeting, because usually we've been hiring to have them come the first meeting of the month.
Right.
It was obviously too busy and now they have to come twice.
Right, they were originally scheduled for this, but I thought a twenty, twenty minutes to a half hour of them on top of this gets us even conspiring later, so.
Yeah, and the highway signs that I mentioned in the DOT biz that I want Fred to have time to talk about as well.
Um, I think that is it, though. There's no executive session for tonight. This is our motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Don't go too far. I want you to both.
Well, we, we also have.
Things to sign.
Hold on, let me.
Things to sign.
So Kristen, do you want to come around while we can all look at the review and continue message from the blah, 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 so you all up signing?
Yes, let me just get us all off.
I am wondering for the sake of transparency.